It is Tuesday, August 10th, and it is 6:30, 4:00 PM. This is the Town of Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilors Zepary and Melendez. So we do have a quorum. Under Calendar and Communications, we can do our quick round the table, and then we have a guest this evening from voter registration that will be presenting to us some communications there. So, Councilor Baumgartner, do you have communications, sir?
No report.
Councilor Parker, Communications?
Just some calendar events. I attended, got an opportunity to go to Groton Heights. I also went to the Arts Festival that was held outside the library, and I want to thank Kathy and Mary Jo and all of them. It was a nice event. I was able to get, help support an artist, local artist, so that was nice. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Franco, Communications?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilor Heed, Communications?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilor Aubrey? You're muted, Councilor Aubrey. Councilor Aubrey, you're muted.
Sorry, I didn't want to unmute.
There you go.
It was trying to give me a message. No report. Thank you very much.
Councilor Bordelain, Communications?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I attended the City Day event, which was very nice. It seemed like a really nice turnout, and it was good weather. Also, just wanted to state that I had made my signatures for the upcoming Democratic primary on September 14th, which were turned in, and so all Democrats will be voting on September 14th. And I've been meeting with constituents in the town and getting a lot of positive feedback.
Point of order, point of order. That is not a report that's appropriate. I'm sorry.
Councilor Bordelain, do you have anything else to report?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Melendez and Zepary, I don't see them here quite yet. So I have attended the Long Term Recovery Meeting, and we're going to be talking about one of the main items tonight. Mr. Mansfield from Ledge Light Health District is here with us to discuss his item. We had presentations from various outside agencies that the town normally funds during our regular budget process, and they did very brief presentations. They may be seeking funding from us when the applications go out. It was very enlightening, and I think that's, that's just a very general overview. I emailed everybody. I had a meeting with, at the request of Chairperson Watson and the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and Mr. Burt, and it was just kind of everybody to meet. And Mr. Burt and Superintendent Austin have set up meeting schedules where they're going to be talking to each other on a regular basis. And the main goal that Chairperson Watson had was to kind of eliminate the silos, right? So that the Board of Ed and the town are working together on a regular basis, especially going into this ARC funding, SIR funding situation, and how we can cooperate and communicate together better. I also was able to attend City Day, and I just wanted to say congratulations and many thanks to Bijanette and Barbara Fruch for all their work. They received the Jackie Nixon Award. So thank you both so much for all your work. And that's all I have under Communications. Councilor Bordelain, did you have something else to report?
Just, I had forgotten that I did also attend the Long Term Recovery Meeting. Thank you.
All right, so we are on to Item 3A. This is a voter registration update, and we have with us this evening Registrar Kristen Vendetti, and she's going to fill us in on what's happening. And where did Kristen go?
Okay, can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Great. I was nervous for a minute. Yes, we can hear you. You have the floor. Thank you so much for being with us.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm open to any questions once I finish as well, or interrupt me while I'm talking if you have a question about what I'm saying. That's perfectly fine. So we are having a primary for the Democrats on September 14th. We had one petition so far come in and has been approved to warrant a primary. The closing of that is August 11th, which is tomorrow at 4:00 PM, so there could be more. But at this time, there is only one challenging candidate that has completed the whole process. Polling places for September 14th, I've worked out with Mr. Burt as well as the Board of Education. We are keeping them the same as what they were before because this is such a short time to get ready for this, to notify everybody that we would be changing a district or two or whatever, would, I think, could be very confusing to the voters. So we are staying at the, I'll just name them, but I have a list and I can email it to you. Groton Public Library will still be District 1. The Zabierski House down on Beach Pond Road in District 2. Groton City Municipal Building will be District 3. Mary Morrison School is still District 4. District 5 is the School of Admin Building. 6 is SB Butler School, and 7 is Fitch High School. Now, we're going to need to change three of these for the November election. The schools were not ready, but in District 2, we're going to be changing over to Thames River Elementary, which is the old Westside Building. In District 6, we're changing over from SB Butler to Mystic River Elementary, which is the old Cutler Building. District 4, we need to change out of Mary Morrison. The only other option we have at this time is Charles Barnum. But there are parking issues as well as other issues with people getting in and, and driving down, knowing where to go. That's a very confusing place. So we're, I'm looking for ideas on where else we can do it. Even if we do Charles Barnum in November to get through this election, we can work for the next year to find another more viable place for District 4. But any ideas you guys have would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have for the primary at this time. If you have any questions or if I didn't cover something that you wanted me to cover, let me know.
I just wanted to ask you just to reiterate, because if someone tuned in and they didn't quite catch it, everything is staying the same for the primary on September 14th, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. The change doesn't happen until November?
Correct.
All right, and at that point, when there is a change, you'll be sending cards again, like you did last time, correct, to the members of District 2?
Yes, and we are still going to advertise it because I know that a lot of people know that the school's closed, so there might be some confusion in that respect. So we are going to advertise it just as if we were changing it. We're just not going to send the cards out. But in November, we'll send the cards out and we'll re-advertise everything that we possibly can. I've got, you know, a day reporter that's willing to, to run many stories for us to get the word out.
So everything's the same for the primary. Excellent. Thank you. Councilor Bordelain?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Vendetti for all her hard work in getting everything ready. In regards to Charles Barnum, I do remember when I lived in District 4 in military housing at one point, the parking issues at the SB Butler. So Mary Morrison, what, I know that building is going to be kept kind of ready and available to use for Board of Ed if there was a spike in enrollment. Is there a reason why we can't use that for the November, November election?
Well, I have not actually spoken about it not being available for the November election, but I do know that they have promised the auditorium or gymnasium, cafetorium, whatever you want to call it, to an organization from the high school to set up and use that regularly. They have a lot of equipment, so therefore if their equipment is in there, it would not be safe for us to use that. However, if there's another room in the building that has an entrance and an exit that are separate, we could probably use that and still stay at Mary Morrison and just stay out of the gymnasium.
Oh, thank you. All right. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
I believe it's the Aluminum Falcons who that was promised to, and we know from past experience, they do have a lot of equipment. Councilor Franco?
Thank you. So Mary Morrison, SB Butler, there won't be, the new schools will be open and that there will be no children in those schools? Is that what you're saying?
I am not completely sure whether the schools will be open yet because I have not gotten that information. I don't know, you know, where the Board of Ed is on this. I just know that we're using the old schools because they don't want maybe to, to cause stress or whatever with all the new kids moving into the schools and, you know, all the new teachers. And then here we throw an election on there, you know, two, two weeks into the school year. I don't know what the reason is, but I was told that they are not ready for us to use yet.
Mr. Burt, do you know if the kids will be in the new school, like Mystic River?
Yes, there's-
SB Butler at the time of the primary?
Yes, they're, they're still on schedule to open up for the new school year.
Okay, so my question is then what's left is Fitch High School and parking? Because I think when school is in session for the day, and if they're not going to close the school that day for the primary, as they normally do when there's election, I'm not sure what we're going to do for parking up there.
Okay, so what we've done in the past up at Fitch is, Board of Ed works with us very well. We had some huge signs made that said, you know, "Vote this way", and then they put up their own signs. Sometimes they don't use mine. They make their own. They're great. It directs everybody to the right that is going to school functions or anything having to do with school. It's not going to allow the teachers to park back there or the students to park back there. All of those spaces back there and down to the front where the, the circle is, all of those spaces to the left are going to be just for the election. And if anybody has parked there for any length of time in the past, we haven't had this issue, but we were told to just contact the Board of Ed and they would make an announcement to have them move their vehicle.
So you're saying from the circle all the way back towards the tennis courts will be cleared out with no parking for the school, for the school administration?
Yes, that's correct.
Wow, that's a lot of parking.
Sometimes we cut it off at the corner as you're coming around the side of the school. So if you head up to the left and then you take your first right turn, we cut it off there. Because this primary is just for one party and the party doesn't have all that many people, we may cut it back just for this one, you know, but for like a presidential, we went all the way down to the center.
Okay, and then just another concern is with children going to be in school while we have people coming up to the school on, you know, to vote, that normally wouldn't be on school property during the school day.
Right, usually at Fitch, they have, they have that hallway, and they close off the doors right next to the gym where we're at, and those are locked. So nobody can get down that hallway, and the kids don't come down for that day. They do other things for gym or whatever they need to do. There are some after-school activities that they use the large gym for, but that's after school with their coach or whatever. And, you know, that's entirely up to them. But during the school day, they have shut that whole hallway down and not let anybody down in there for the safety of the students.
Well, that's good. I just, I think there'd be just so, you know, a lot of people on site during a school day that normally aren't on site, and I just don't quite like the thought of that. Thank you. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other first-time speakers before we go to second-time speakers? I just wanted to note that Councilor Melendez did arrive at 6:39, so he's with us, and we've been notified. Councilor Zepary has an emergency, and he cannot be with us this evening. Councilor Bordelain, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you. Kristen, in the past, though, other elections, we did have schools, and they've done this before.
Yes, that's correct. And if, if the school is open and the students are in there, we usually employ a person to be, you know, in quote "security", and what they do is they stand outside of the polling room and in the hallway, and they make sure that everybody that enters comes straight into where the voting is, and as they're leaving, they make sure that they exit exactly, you know, straight. Sorry, my words.
No, um, I, I, because I remember voting at Westside and them having the, the thing up by the office, and you couldn't go any further, so it has been done. And in this primary, it would only be Fitch, right, technically, that would have anybody in the building since everything else is going to be at other sites?
Yes, that's correct.
So it only would affect the high school, and in the past, it affected all the schools, including the elementary. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Registrar Vendetti. We appreciate your being with us this evening and sharing the information, and we look forward to helping you to publicize whatever it is you choose to put out there for the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right, we are on to item number four, Approval of Minutes. Councilor Baumgartner?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 27, 2021. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Aubrey. Any discussion on the meeting minutes of July 27th? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of July 27th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Franco?
I'm sorry?
Franco is abstaining.
Abstention? I'm sorry, abstention?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Franco. So we are on to item number five. This is new business. This is 2021-591, Ledge Light Health Department Request for American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And this is on page 11, I believe. Let me double check. Yes, the item is on page 11, and Councilor Parker, would you just place this on the floor for us, please?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve $85,878.94 in funding from the American Rescue Plan Act Funds to the Ledge Light Health District. I so moved.
I will second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Granatowski. Thank you. And with us this evening, we have Mr. Mansfield from Ledge Light Health District. Mr. Burt, did you wish to introduce this before we turn it over to Mr. Mansfield?
I think the motion is pretty, well, I'll give a little bit. As, as you've seen in the agenda item, it was a request for 1% of our ARPA, our American Rescue Funding Act Funds. And he will, Mr. Mansfield will go over the potential uses for those. But because these are ARPA dollars, of course, we have to track these. But Cindy and I have discussed how that will be done, and we feel, feel comfortable with moving forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Mr. Mansfield, you have the floor, sir. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to let me speak with you briefly regarding Ledge Light Health District's request for a portion of the Groton American Rescue Plan funding. Just a little bit of background. As I mentioned in my correspondence to Mr. Burt, health districts across Connecticut did not receive a dedicated rescue plan funding stream. Instead, we were expected to reach out to all of our member municipalities and request a portion of their funding, similar to what was done with a coronavirus funding stream last year, if you remember. With that particular funding stream, I believe it was in November, our municipalities decided to contribute 10% of their total allocation. With this rescue plan allocation, essentially because the numbers are so big, every municipality is getting a much larger sum of money, we're asking for a contribution of 1% of the total funding amount. For the Town of Groton, this is just under $86,000. I have spoken with all of my municipal members in nine municipalities, as well as two boroughs, who received a separate allocation than our nine-member municipalities. Two of those municipalities have already allocated the 1% funding, and all but one of the remainder have verbally concurred with my proposal. I know you all have a copy of my spreadsheet, which details how we plan on spending this money. And I thank you very much for your consideration and continued support of Ledge Light Health District, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, and thank you for attending our Long Term Recovery Meeting last week as well. That was very helpful for everybody.
My pleasure.
And we will open it up for questions now. Councilor Bordelain?
Thank you. Thank you so much, seeing you at the Long Term, Long Term Recovery Meeting. I appreciate all the hard work and direction and guidance you give our towns in supporting us through the pandemic and after, and as it, you know, surges and it sets as it seems it does and comes back. So I do appreciate everything you guys do. Looking at that, you said certain boroughs. I know that in our town, Groton, Long Point, and the city also received funds. Are they also allocating 1% of their funding towards this? Maybe John would know?
They're not fiscal partners with the Health Department like we are, so there's a bit of a difference there. Is that, that's my understanding correct, Steve?
Yeah, there absolutely is a difference. The funding that Ledge Light Health District receives from Groton covers the boroughs, the city, and so forth. But this funding stream is a bit different in that the Borough of Groton, Long Point, and the Borough of Stonington did receive a separate and distinct allocation of the American Rescue Plan Funds, so we did ask for 1% of their funds in addition to what we're asking the town for.
Okay, and is those funds, or do we know yet if Groton, Long Point is going to give those funds, or where are we at?
All I know is, is what I stated in the beginning. Two have definitively said that's the Town of Ledgerd and the Town of North Stonington. I've had conversations with everyone else, and everyone has been very enthusiastic, but I haven't seen anything in writing yet from those, those boroughs.
Thank you so much for all your help.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other, yes, Councilor Franco?
Thank you. I was wondering, since your last visit with us, I recall you stating that we, when you're giving out the vaccines, that you can't refuse anything on insurance, and you were working on maybe trying to alleviate that. Has that been done?
No, it hasn't been done. That's one of the things we've considered doing, but actually decided against it based on anecdotal information we received from our fellow health districts across the state. Basically, we have to consider whether or not the headache, that's the best way to describe it, of going through the reimbursement process is actually worth the money that we would receive. As you can imagine, holding mass vaccination clinics is complicated enough as it is, and with the, the receipt of the funding that was specifically designed for that purpose, we didn't feel the need to move forward with, with getting the, I guess you'd call it the certification to become a provider and then be subject to reimbursement from the federal government. So we made the decision not to move down that path.
Fully understand. It is, um, it's a lot of work.
It is, for sure.
So I can, you know, definitely is a need for you to receive this money and how you don't get the reimbursement that other places that are certified to receive insurance would. So I think this is absolutely something that I would be signing off on, and I thank you for all that you're doing to try and keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Aubrey, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. I just want to reiterate what the others are saying. I would hate to think where we would be without your expert help and your willingness to cooperate when we were trying to do any kind of a clinic. Your, your staff has been outstanding, and I think you've done so much to keep Groton and Groton City safe. I just should say Groton. You kept Groton safe. So I want to thank you very much and tell you I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Aubrey.
Councilor Heed?
Uh, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mansfield, in the, the newspaper this weekend, it was ARPA Current, there was an article about which towns have done really well when it comes to COVID vaccine, COVID vaccinations, and which ones are towards the bottom, and Groton, it turns out, is closer to the bottom. I know you've been doing a lot of outreach for the vaccines, and you have, you brought a truck, for example, to one of our events. And I know there's another one coming up in September where you've partnered with the Board of Ed. But are, what else do you think we can do to, to address this shortfall in vaccinations?
It's a really good question, and I think it's being asked across the United States in some areas more than others, for sure. In, within the jurisdiction of Ledge Light Health District, there are areas that are known as SVI areas. Basically, it's a state designation that says these areas are underserved or the population in these areas has less opportunity than others. So per the, the requirements, the grant requirements that we have through the Department of Public Health, we have a responsibility to go into these areas. There are SVI areas in the city of Groton, in, in a big portion of New Lunin, and another section of Waterford. So although we don't target our efforts exclusively on those areas, we make sure that we cover them as best we can. So right now, we're having two to three pop-up clinics a week throughout our jurisdiction. Unfortunately, we feel very successful if we get into the double digits with clinics at this point in time. So it's a big struggle to get those people who are unvaccinated, for whatever reason, to come to a clinic. We're trying a whole bunch of different things. We currently have a program called My Why. I know a number of you have seen it. There are videos that we put together of people who may have been reluctant to go through the vaccination process from all different walks of life, and most of their reasons are, are distinctly different. Some are similar in some ways, but it's basically individual stories about why they decided to do what they decided to do and eventually get vaccinated. That's been very well received. We've shared it with a lot of districts, and of course, the State Department of Public Health. Although we don't have any grant deliverables specifically funding that particular activity, it's things like that that we think bring people to, to these vaccination clinics. And I wish I had a, a clearer understanding of why that data that was presented in the Hartford Current was what it is. I think it varies so much, community to community, and we'll just continue to do our best to try and get to those populations.
All right, thank you. So I know there's like unlimited wants for what we use the money for, but masks is 1% enough for what you need to do?
That's a really good question. So 1% is an unanticipated funding stream for us. As I said at the RTM and the, and all of the budget hearings back when I presented my budget, we asked for a 3% increase from our member municipalities during the current fiscal year. That money is adequate to run our organization. You know, we make a budget request that reflects what we need to do our work and also what the towns, in our opinion, can afford to pay their health departments. So in a perfect world, we would have asked the Town of Groton for a 10% increase, but we know that's not realistic. So we backed Bernard a number of things, and a number of those items are listed on that spreadsheet, things we will do with the money that will make our jobs as public health practitioners easier, make things more efficient. The purchase of a vaccination vehicle, it sounds perhaps like a big purchase, but we've been dragging around a trailer and working out of a 20-year-old F-150 through this entire pandemic, and it works, for sure. But purchasing a new van that's dedicated for vaccine transport has the appropriate refrigeration and so forth, those are all things that we think are going to be a big addition. So to answer your question, we could use a lot more money than this, for sure, but we think it's very reasonable, as I said, because the pot of money is so large, and since we have nine municipalities, this will bring in approximately, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling down, $628,000 to the district. And again, that's unanticipated funds. So yes, I think it's a fair ask, and it will go a long way toward bettering not only our COVID response, but our public health response in general.
All right, excellent. Thank you. I'm, I'm the mayor. I yield the floor.
Thanks, sir. I just wanted to say thank you. You've been, you've been busy doing your job, but you've also been busy attending all these meetings that we've asked you to attend and being very clear in your explanation as to what the need is and how the money will be used, and that's appreciated for all of us, and the community appreciates it as well. There is a spreadsheet available that was included in our packet if anybody in the public wanted to take a look exactly what the money will be used for. But two of those things are outreach and clinics, right? So the outreach is amazing, and I think if we can continue that effort, hopefully it will pay dividends for us. And I am one of the ones that particularly enjoyed the My Why videos, and it's targeting different segments of the population, and they're very good. And I hope that people will take a look at them when they see them out there on social media. Very well done, and it's, it's a good angle. So thank you so much for that. All right, I see no- All right, I see no other hands. So, just looking. We will vote on 2021-591 Ledge Light Health Department Request for American Rescue Plan Act Funds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Keep up the good work and be well, sir.
Thank you, everyone. May I ask a brief question, restarting process? Every municipality is doing this a little bit differently, and I, of course, I heard the vote, and thank you very much for that support across the board. What is the next step for the Town of Groton in regard to this funding?
Well, right now, we're going to recess and have a council meeting, where we're gonna vote again and officially pass the money through from the council, and then this goes to the RTM on, Mr. Burt, is it Wednesday night, correct?
Tomorrow night. It is tomorrow night, yes, and that's, that's the final step.
Right. So once that's done, so, so the finance committee meeting you went to on Monday, and what you just did are committee meetings. Both of those have the full body then that also has to vote on the item. So RTM will do that tomorrow night. We're gonna do that right now.
Great. And I just looked, yes, I do have the Groton RTM meeting on my calendar for tomorrow as well.
All right, great. So we're gonna, we're gonna recess this meeting. We're gonna recess Committee of the Whole at 7:05. I think we're okay going ahead and recessing, right, Mr. Burt? Yes? I don't think we need to do anything else. So the COW has been recessed at 7:05.
You're fine to do that.
I'm sorry?
You're perfectly fine to do that.
Yes. So then we will call to order, let me just put something in here so I can find my way back in a minute. I will call to order the Groton Town Council Special Meeting. It is Tuesday, August 10th at 7:06 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, we have all councilors except Councilor Superior. He had an emergency.
Thank you. And the new business is 2021-5911 Ledge Light Health Department Request for American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and I believe we are on Councilor Franco.
Yes, thank you. Resolution to approve funding from the Town of Groton's American Rescue Plan Funds to the Ledge Light Health District, whereas the Ledge Light Health District has been leading the COVID mitigation and response efforts in the Town of Groton, and whereas the Town of Groton is experiencing increased COVID infection numbers due to the cooperation of the Delta variant, and whereas the Ledge Light Health District is in need of increased funding in order to combat the virus, and whereas the Ledge Light Health District has requested each of their member municipalities to contribute 1% of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding to be received by each of those municipalities. And whereas 1% of the Town of Groton's ARPA funding is $85,878.94, now be it resolved that the Town of Groton approves $85,878.94 from its ARPA funding for the Ledge Light Health District, and hereby recommend the referral to the RTM for approval. I so moved.
Second, Heed.
Parker? Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Now, this is the item we just discussed, so I'm assuming we have no further comments. Seeing none, all those in favor of 2021-591 Ledge Light Health Department Request for American Rescue Plan Act Funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Town Council meeting.
Moved.
Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Second by Franco.
Second by Franco. All those in favor of adjourning the special Town Council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. The Town Council meeting is adjourned at 7:08 PM. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for being with us.
My pleasure. I think I'll hang around, though you may need me for the fifth item on your agenda. Five, E, five E, I don't know if you need.
That's perfectly fine, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, so we are reconvening the Committee of the Whole meeting at 7:09 PM, and Mr. Mansfield, I think you're all set with us, so I will see you tomorrow night at the RTM meeting.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night, sir. Thank you. All right, so we are on to item 5B, which is 2020-417 Short Term Rental Discussion, and the packet included, there's no resolution for this evening, but there was a draft ordinance that we had hoped that everybody would take a look at, and we could have some discussion on this tonight. There were some changes made based on feedback from the last time we discussed this, so I will turn it over to, I believe Mr. Reiner is with us, correct?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Hello. Thank you for being here. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Also with me tonight that helped a lot with this latest draft is Rich Cody, our Town Attorney. And I, I think very briefly, we, based on some feedback from the last meeting, we simplified the ordinance a little bit more and would happy to answer any questions or talk through any specific areas that any council members would like us to address.
Thank you. Do councilors have questions regarding the draft ordinance? And Councilor Aubrey, you have the floor? You're muted, Councilor Aubrey?
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay.
In, under definitions, and where it says dwelling, any single unit providing complete independent living, would that cover duplexes or triplexes or et cetera?
I, I think that it would, because we look at a dwelling unit as a separate unit. So each side of a duplex or each unit within a triplex would be considered its own unit, as opposed to not looking at the building exterior itself.
All right. I'm, I'm not too comfortable with it, but Mr. Cody is, I'm sure okay with it, but I think it might run into a little bit of a problem. The other thing I, question I had, under the short-term rentals, you have a provision in here for no more than 30 days. Now, there are times when people come in and rent a property for the entire summer through one of these organizations. How would that be handled?
That, that would fall outside this ordinance.
Okay, even though they're doing it through an AB or whatever they call those things, even though they're doing it through one of the companies and they're in for the summer, if there was a problem, what would you do then?
Well, that would, that would be handled in the ordinary course, again, outside this particular ordinance. This ordinance is structured to capture those short-term rentals. But a, but a full summer, full summer rental would, would, would exist tomorrow after the ordinance is adopted, just as it does today.
Well, I'm gonna tell you those two things I'm not comfortable with, but I will go with the majority. But I think both of those things could provide a problem in the future. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Mr. Burt, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna mention, I know we've gone through a lot of iterations of this. We did discuss, I think it was at the last meeting, about the seasonal rentals and that at some point the council could look at doing a separate ordinance for that. It wasn't really appropriate for this one. That was the direction of the council to, to staff.
Okay.
Councilor Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking under the definition, short-term rental, the use of a dwelling unit in whole or in part for transient lodging for compensation by renters for no more than 30 days. Has there been any thought into this sort of only applying to short-term rentals of a unit in whole and not in part? I think that's a, that's a distinction where if someone's running a business and buying up units and renting them out for short-term rentals, there's not really gonna be, it's not gonna be the ones where someone's just renting out their room in their house. So has that been, or have you seen that in other towns where the ordinance, the ordinances are just for renting out the whole unit?
Well, if I can, interesting question, but we, we did consider that. The reason we say in whole or in part is to capture circumstances and to bring into the, under the umbrella of this ordinance, the use of a dwelling unit, whether it's in whole or in part, for that purpose. If you were to take out the in part, people might be able to rent out a dwelling unit in part for that purpose and not be captured by the ordinance. So we wanted to be sure we were capturing all, all the activity.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of like, all the things that you have to be, like you have to register and you have to, you know, pay all this stuff, and I, I'm not sure if someone just renting out their room in their house is sort of the issue that we're trying to tackle here. I mean, I guess being you know, being on the safe side is better, but I, I just don't think that someone's gonna rent out a room and that's gonna be like a party house or something, but I don't know. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on just regulating short-term rentals that are the whole house. But thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Councilor Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you. Question about the exterior signage is prohibited. Is this in conjunction with what Town Ordinance does? Because that was my question when I first asked about the appearance and signage. Because we were trying to be consistent with the Town ordinances?
Yes, we are trying to be consistent with Town ordinances, and I'm just trying to look at what section?
It's middle of page three, John.
Okay, thank you.
Section 4D.
Okay.
Because I'm wondering, you're saying this signage is prohibited, but there are people that place signs out for rent to rent their homes yearly and stuff. So are we gonna be prohibiting them? We're not being consistent. I was gonna say something. I just want to make sure that we're consistent on how.
This would apply only to advertising for the short-term rental.
So they can only advertise online?
That's right. This is exterior signage being on the property is, with a sign out front that says, rent here by the night.
Okay. And my other question was, the fees, is that consistent? Did we discuss fees? Or is this something you guys were thinking about? Is this like in, look that other places?
I'm sorry, in terms of the penalties or the registration?
The penalties.
The penalties, we, we plucked those out of thin air. So they're open for discussion.
All right. My third question is about if the owner changes or doesn't change, I believe it says something about they have to get a new number. Is that correct? If something happens, like
That's right.
Family member passes on and it goes down to the next family member, or maybe it's a family company? So that has to be a new number and not under original number? Am I reading that correctly?
That is right. If the ownership of the property changes, then the purpose of the registration would change. Because the underlying purpose of the registrations is for the right party, who's the owner, to be available and, and be disclosed to, to the town, so that if a problem arises, they can be reached. So if the ownership changes, they have to, they just have to register again. Not again, they have to register for the first time. The new owner would have to register.
Thank you. Councilor Franco, you have the floor?
Thank you. So when I read through some of this, we've had discussions on some of this before, and what I always think to myself is, are we holding different, like long-term versus short-term, you know, accountable and the differences, and also versus, you know, the rights of a property owner? So there's definitions in off-street parking area, I think we've discussed this before, that an area located entirely within the property, and basically you're saying in here shall be designated and used for the parking of motor vehicles. Is this saying that they have to park off-street?
It, it doesn't require off-street parking. It requires that there be available off-street parking for the unit. So if there's street parking, they, it's not prohibited.
So if they don't have a driveway or off-street parking, you can't be a short-term rental?
I didn't think, I don't think we've considered whether there's a driveway or not. In other words, a circumstance where there's no driveway.
Well, it, it does say like off-street parking spaces, garages or private driveways.
Right.
So I, I have an issue with that as well, and I think that's why New London did not go forward, because they had an issue with that, because in London, and also if you're gonna require that from a short-term renter, are you going to require that from long-term renters as well? And is there a difference?
Well, the development of any new housing, we certainly require off-street parking.
But if you have a house and you don't have like a driveway and you have street parking, you can still do it as long-term parking, and there's no ordinance or any, the town that says you have to have off-street parking, correct?
Not that I'm aware of. If it, if it's something that was built before that is historically used off-street, sorry, on-street parking, then it, it usually goes that way, if it's, if it's legal parking unless something changes along the road.
I just know that, you know, that could, I, I just don't think that's right to put it onto the short-term renters, but maybe not onto long-term rentals, and I think there's a very discrepancy there, that maybe we should possibly remove that. Also, I have in section 4B2, there's noise, and it says noise. It put a couple of noise and use restrictions, and that's all it says, and I don't even know what that means. And I don't know if anybody that gets this paperwork is gonna know what that means.
We wanted to just alert people to the fact that there are nuisance requirements dealing with noise, but we do not have a noise ordinance in town.
All right, because I think it's, I don't know why we're putting it there if we're actually we don't have a noise ordinance, so that's what we were talking about removing last time, and and then B4, location of trash receptacles not to be stored within public view. This is another one that we don't expect this from any other homeowners or long-term renters or anybody else, but we're gonna expect it from the short-term renters, so I don't, I don't think that belongs in there. When it was mentioned about the exterior signage is prohibited, and that's on number D, I have noticed that if you have a B and B, sometimes they have the name of their, the name of their house on it, or they have people just in general haven't named their house, you know, the whatever compound or, or the Mermaid Inn, or whatever they want to name it, and they put those signs out, so you're prohibiting that?
In this current draft, yes.
All right, I think I'd like to have that taken out and maybe just have something stating to, you know, exterior signage per planning and zoning regulations of some sort, maybe like they can't have like big flying in the wind signs out in front and all these other stuff, you know, big neon lights and but those are, that's something that I think they should have to go with the regulations of the town.
And your time is up, Councilor Franco.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Bordel, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so looking at my notes here, um, did we look at the Stonington ordinance in comparison? They have an ordinance. Is that correct, Attorney Cody?
Um, I'm aware that they have it. I did not model this one after that one.
Yeah. Are you familiar with any of the short-term rentals in Stonington and how they operate at all or?
Um, I am not in particular, even though I live in Stony.
Right. Alright, um, I, I think the signage thing, I think it should be per the owner's discretion. I think from my own experience of renting or having friends who rented in different towns and states, some of these short-term rentals, you come in late at night and if they're in clusters or neighborhoods, um, it's some, if the GPS doesn't bring it to the right number, there's been people trying to open doors to rentals where it were actual homes in the middle of the night at nine o'clock because the lighting was poor and folks were not able to tell if they were at the right spot. So some identifier, if it's not a permanent identifier or something, it could be just as the size of a historic sign up by the, the number of the door. It could be something that the short-term rental folks might want to put up and down when they're not, you know, using for short-term rental. But I think it is important to, um there have been disturbances of people who, and I've done it. I pulled into, and Kate pulled into a spot and it was marked wrong and uh I'm at someone's door. It, it's so easily to do, um, because there's not an in-keeper at these units. Um, people come at their will and they purchase online and they might not know the area. So it can cr- create a disturbance when folks are trying to just merely find the right place to park. They can't see and the number. So some signage is, is, I think important um in some avenue. I agree with Councilor Franco. I don't think it should be neon lighting or anything um too large, but something that fits, you know, like the signs that we have that say eighteen ninety-two, you know, established or something. Um, so it could be very discreet, but yet um give them a, a firm uh ability to, to make sure that they are right at the right location. Um, the parking issue in, in the way this is written is a little strange to me as well. Um I mean, I think we, we shaved down some of the things. I do agree. I mean, if we're gonna make short-term rentals do certain things and large should have to do them as well because it gets kind of clunky. Saying the noise thing without really explaining what it is or that there is none is confusing as well. Um, but I, I am interested in seeing, uh, I think when we look at the Groton-Stonington side, um you know, there's a lot of people who have three-family rentals, um, short-term rentals and such. Um, some are requiring uh sprinklers in those as well. Um, that, you know, per code, uh, cause it's three-story, but I think we need to have a baseline as to, you know, looking at the Mystic and Stonington side, maybe some continuity since they're kind of renting with a river away. Thank you.
Are there any other first-time speakers before we go to second-time speakers?
I just want to mention when things, when, when individual ideas come up, the council as a whole should weigh in on them so we know whether the change, whether everyone wants that change or a majority.
I'm gonna um take a turn before we go to second-time speakers. Um, what, what I'm noticing is that um some of the feedback we gave the last time we discussed this was to try to make it consistent with what other people in town have for their normal dwellings. Um, and that's why some of these, I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's why some of these changes were put in place, um, to try to make it more consistent. I think that the, keeping the noise line in is important. Um, and we've discussed the merits of a noise ordinance before, but um, we also said that we would like our public safety officials to be able to use what exists in order to maintain um, you know, the acceptable quality that the neighbors like in the neighborhood. And I think keeping that there would kind of give a nod to the people that they, they realize there is something that, you know, a level that the town deems acceptable, right? And I think it's important that it be listed there. That way, you know, if someone does complain and public safety has to show up, then it's not a complete surprise, right? Um, because we've gone through the merits of noise ordinance and we decided we didn't want a noise ordinance. Um, I'm not kind of torn on the off-street parking thing. I'm not really sure how to go with this. I'm trying to picture areas where um this could be an issue and my head goes to Mystic and Noank, right? And those are the two areas, maybe some areas of the city where there would be issues with finding street parking. So I'm, I'm kind of torn on that and I'd like to hear what the rest of the council says. As far as the trash receptacles, I'm not sure about other fire districts, but I know in my area, there are rules about when you can put your garbage out, how long you can leave it out, all those kinds of things. So that is something that um I, I think should be left in there. The signage again is something that we were trying to make consistent with what, what other people have as far as their area. Um, the penalties, I am open to debating that. I'm not quite sure what, what is good and what is not good. I haven't looked at dollar amounts for um licensing or for penalties. So I'm curious to hear what um the rest of the council feels about that as well. And I have thirty seconds left, so I'll stop now and give the floor to um Councilor Heat who hasn't spoken yet. Councilor Heat.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, generally speaking, I, I'm happy with the ordinance that I see here. Uh, it addresses the parking issue. It addresses the noise. It addresses you know, the, the trash is, as you were saying. Uh, I would say that in regards to the signage, I mean, people name their houses, right? I think what, what that could be is maybe a not promoting it as an Airbnb, but I, I don't know. I'm open to that one. Um, I, I think the way Councilor Franco stated it was probably the best way to go on that. That was really kind of the only thing that jumped out at me. Um, and then of course the um, the fines, I'm, I'm open to discussion on fines um and, and all that. So alright, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Any other first-time speakers? Alright, we'll go back to Councilor Obree had her hand up first for the second time.
Um, I just wanted to mention most times when you're going to one of these, uh, you don't have a key. You, uh, there's a lock box on the box, on the door and you're using the code that they have given you. So there's not too much chance of somebody walking into a house that they're not supposed to be in. And uh, also I was gonna mention, I don't know if it falls into this, but years back, uh, we had an extensive um uh committee and all kinds of things to come up with the regulations for signs. And there might very well be something in there. I'm not sure, Mr. Reiner, but I know that we uh put together, you know, it started out with for sale signs and went into everything in the course of it being deliberated. And I think that was before you came here, so I'll, I'll give you a space on that one. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So uh, just on signage, things have changed a lot in the last few years uh with the US Supreme Court ruling in on not being able to address signage based on content. So we can address on square footage, setbacks, location, but not really on content. And our zoning regulations now fully address that.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. Also in section E, um, it's about the response time. Um, and if requested by a police officer, the owner, the owner's agent, whose name appears on the STR registration must be um available over the phone or text within sixty minutes after receiving a request. Failure of the owner, the owner's agent to be on the STR premises or available by phone or text within sixty minutes after receiving their request by the police officer is a violation of this ordinance. And that worries me a bit because then I think you get into, you know, somebody getting a fine for not calling back within sixty minutes. And I will tell you if somebody, if I had a short-term rented rental and while I'm in this meeting, somebody tried to contact me, I won't be able to respond in sixty minutes. Simply because people have things going on in life and I think that's you know, and if I, every time I had a meeting or any, every time I had, I was traveling on an airplane or if I was um at church or something, I would have to have somebody else on call with my, you know, with the phone and trans, you know, transferring over my phone to somebody to be able to respond within sixty minutes. So I don't know if that's really a, you know, wise to be able to in, inflict violations which are penalties of five hundred dollars for you not being able to call back within sixty minutes. So that one I have an issue with as well. And Mr. Cody, a question I have for you is we, we're looking at this. Like I said, from what I understood when we first discussed this, we have to be very careful legally about distinguishing between long-term, short-term and property rights. Um, and trying to impose things on a short-term renter that we wouldn't impose on anybody else in the community. So can you just talk to that and like how we should, like how we should be dealing with this? Because I, like even the trash can, I understand about putting it out of the road. I don't have a problem with that part of it. Like it has to be removed at the right time. But it's even stating that you have to store it out of sight. Like we don't expect that from any other homeowner and we don't tell any other homeowner where to store their trash cans. So like, how do we impose that on these people? But not long-term or homeowners or anybody else. And like, that's my question and I have, that's where I really struggle with a lot of these these issues.
Um, well, it, it's, it's hard. I mean, what you're asking really are, is a mixture of legal and policy questions and um you, you know, if you want, if you want to have a short-term rental, which has its own set of, separate set of concerns than a single-family residence occupied for, by somebody who's been there for ten years. You try to identify the issues that are associated with the short-term rental that are unique and then try to regulate them. And so that's what these ordinances try to do is they try to deal with circumstances where you have people coming and going rapidly. They may not care about where they put the garbage when they're running out uh to, to, to meet their next appointment or next destination. Um, you're worried about perhaps they're having guests when they, when they do that and when they, when they rent. And uh, you want to deal with the, the impact from that by saying, okay, well, you need some off-street parking. So the, the question really becomes if you want to treat short-term rentals that, that have their own separate set of circumstances, and that's why we're talking about it. We're talking about it, I think, because you've identified that there's, there's a community issue with the short-term rentals. It's different from um, long-term rentals or long-term ownership, long-term occupancies. And you try to regulate them by identifying the, the special characteristics. So that's what this ordinance is about. And I don't think it can be perfectly even. I just don't think it can be. Because you're trying to regulate something that's different from uh, than, than the other uses. Much in a way you regulate hotels differently. Um, or boarding rooms differently. You're just trying to capture an activity that's relatively new, has some special impacts to the community. You've received complaints about it. You probably receive a lot of positive aspects to it. And uh, you're just trying to decide whether to regulate it and how to do it, but you have to pick, you have, you have to select those, those attributes that are peculiar to this kind of use. So
Like imposing too much on a short-term rental. But I also think like other things that aren't listed here in the full document, we have addressed, um you know, like the safety concerns and I mean, we've addressed that if there is a noise issue that our police are gonna respond and, and they're going to take care of it. And um I, I just re- I really, I think when um Attorney Dugan was here in the very beginning, she wrote this one out for us on how to think about this. It really set the stage for me on how to move forward with it. And, and she was like, and she had expressed some things that there have been um litigation because a municipality has imposed things on short-term renters.
So Franco, your time is up.
Thank you.
Any other first-time speakers? Councilor Bordel, you have the floor for your second time.
Thank you. Um, just looking um, I, I understand what Councilor uh Obree stated about the lockbox. Um, some, some places that I've been to have not had lockboxes. So and if they weren't well-lit, it was hard to find. You know, um, everyone has a different unique setup depending on the, the person. So it, it can be a problem and it can be where you're trying to figure out where to park and how to get in. So signage on the ones I've been to have been helpful to pull in and find that lockbox if it exists or however they leave the key under, you know, whatever code or box or however they leave it. Um, so sometimes it's a number right on the door handle, but once again, you're at someone's door handle trying to look for the number, but if you can't see and there's no signage. Um, so that's just a concern that I had heard. Um, it's making sure there is some signage and well-lit that people can get in and out. Um, so does Stonington have a short-term rental um ordinance, uh, Attorney Cody?
I, I, I have heard that they were talking about one. Uh, they may have adopted it. I, I don't know.
You don't know? Okay.
When I, when I start renting one of my units out, I'll find out.
Alright, um, you know, I just think, I mean, if there's not a huge rush here, I think it'd be interesting to kind of also now take what we, once we finalize this draft and compare with our neighbors, just to make sure we're doing our full due diligence. You know, really it's good. I know with plastic ordinance, it was really important that folks wanted to pull the Stonington ordinance to look at that. So I think in this case, it would be good to look at our neighbors if there are ordinances so that we kind of are somewhat um within the ball field. Uh, we could have our own uniqueness in it, in the document that applies to our town. But I think it'd be nice to kind of look at surrounding ordinances um as a body, um, to kind of, you know, kind of pick through that. I, the sixteen minutes part, I also can agree with, with Councilor Franco, that that is a bit encumbersome to meet. That could be kind of tough. So that, that I think could be looked at um as well. Um, but I do think that, you know, there's no rush here. I think it's important that we do it, uh, uh, our due diligence and present a very strong document that has um wiggle room, but also addresses all the concerns. And so I think we should do a little bit more research and um, is that something you could bring Mr. Cody to one of our meetings or send us in an email? Um, what the other towns and surrounding have currently in, in reference to this?
Um, I can certainly do a survey and, and send you copies of whatever ordinances I find. I, I know in Stonington that they tried to regulate it through, they first considered regulating this zoning. They wisely decided not to do it that way because of the issue of non-conforming uses. Um, and I know they, they've talked about it. Danielle has talked about it uh over in Stonington, but I don't know if they've passed it, but I can, I can certainly take the surrounding communities and see, see what else they have. And then circulate those if, if, if that's what you'd like.
Yeah, I would like to see the response time. Are they doing, or towns within sixty minutes? Are they using an hour, maybe two? Like, you know, I mean, two hours or an hour and a half. Um, you know, are they doing signage? You know, like what things are working? I mean, people that have had them in place a little bit longer. Um, it might be good to see, you know, just our surrounding, maybe westerly even, um, might be nyanic, might be good to look at. Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime in here really quickly. At the very beginning of this, the start of this whole process, I think it's been a good couple of years now that we've been working on this. Uh, one of the first things we did was we met with um people from all the surrounding communities. And um, s- some of you were referencing New London decided not to go ahead. Ledger jumped right in. They, they have one already. City doesn't have anything yet. I don't believe Stonington has anything yet. I'm trying to think, Mr. Bird, who else was at that meeting as far as surrounding towns? But you know, we, that's, that was our starting point. We started there and we've been working on this through. Um, what we need to do right now is to give um staff consensus as to the concerns that have been raised. And the very first thing um that several of you have spoken to is the signage. Is there consensus that the signage language needs to be changed? Is
Yes.
Could, could you please just do this? If you just turn your cameras on and put your hands up or, or raise your hand and let me know if you would like the signage language changed. Okay, so there's a majority of the council that would like the signage language changed and um, put your hands down, please. I'm gonna ask another question. Um, are you in favor of specifying? Wow, that's an either or question. I feel like I'm playing twenty questions here. Um, do you, are you in favor of no signage at all? Let's see that. How many would like no, um, I'm sorry, um, any type of signage at all? Like, do you want them to be able to put up whatever kind of sign they want? Okay, no. So then you're looking for a specific type of signage. Mr. Reiner, do you have a twenty questions question that you could phrase that we could get a quick show?
May, maybe we just strike that section and just whatever signage is allowed by zoning is what's allowed.
Is that acceptable to everybody?
I agree.
How many? Let's see hands, please. How many would just like that stricken? Okay, sounds good. So D's, uh, four D is gone under standards. Um, the next
Point of clarification on that, please? Before we move right along, if I may? Whatever zoning requires. So if they live in an area that is allowing a big poster board sign, they could have it. I mean, that could run into the risk. I mean, I, I think that needs to be, I just think we're rushing through it and I think we should think we're rushing through it. And I think we should be, we should allow people to talk through this, raising hands. Like there's certain sections where you kind of need to speak a little bit about it. And I think just saying whatever zoning requires, if you live on a main strip and you, you could then put a poster, you could put a billboard out there if you wanted.
I believe Mr. Reiner spoke to that when he recalled the Supreme Court decision where we cannot regulate content. It's more about the size of the signage. So, Mr. Reiner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they would have to follow whatever the town-wide regulation is for signage?
Correct. So in, in that, the signage requirements are different per district. So a residential district is different than a commercial district as far as the, the number of signs, the setbacks, and the total square footage of signs.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner.
So my question to that was then if they lived in a, a business commercial district, what, what kind of sign can they have there then?
It would have to be consistent with what is appropriate as per our zoning regulations. And that, as Mr. Reiner just said, it will vary from district to district.
Right. I think that starts getting in the weeds a little bit. I think that should be streamed down a little bit more. That would be my opinion. So I would not, yeah.
Well, then that, then you're saying you want some kind of regulation and people just said they don't want any regulation. So we, we need to have some kind of middle ground and it looked like a majority would like to have that stricken. So that's where we are.
That's fine. I just think to fully be able to speak to the point.
Mr. Cody?
Asking for, you know, hands is not allowed to ask for full deliberation. And I, I'm against that part. I think we should have a sign regulation that is appropriate for this type of establishment. And it shouldn't be, depending on what area, we should make it as streamlined as possible. Thank you.
If I may, I think I just, a note to everybody, I meant to respond to Tom Zanarini, who asked me a question.
Okay.
Can we regulate signage based on content? The answer is no.
Correct. Thank you. That's what Mr. Reiner was pointing out to us. All right. The next section we are on is.
Clarification. I was asking, and not about the content, I was asking about the size. Just want to make sure I'm clear.
Right. And Mr. Reiner addressed that. We are moving on to the next item, which is off-street parking. So the question of off-street parking, councilors, is there a consensus that? I, I heard one speak to a concern on that. Do others have a concern? This is Section 4B3. Which is locations of off-street parking, which references the definition under Section 2. Are there, could you raise your hand if you have a concern with that, please? And if you do, we'll address those concerns. So I see one, two. I only see two councilors that have concerns. So that's not a majority of the council.
Which section are we on again, please?
Section 4B3. Off-street parking. Okay, so I'm only seeing Councilors Baumgartner and Franco that had concerns on that section. So then let's go on to the noise and use restrictions. This is Section 4B2. How many have concerns about?
My hand was up on the last one. I was overlooked. My hand was up.
Counselor Bordelon?
Point of clarification. I wish we could slow down a little bit. My hand was up under the last one, please.
Counselor Bordelon? We are trying to get consensus and give direction to town staff.
If you could speak to me with respect, Mayor Grenetowski, I'm just stating that you only stated two councilors' names in the, the last section, and my hand was up. So I'm asking you to include that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will do that. So on the last item, Councilors Baumgartner, Franco, and Bordelon had concerns. We are on to the next item, which is 4B2. Applicable noise, applicable noise and use restrictions. Are there councilors who have concerns here? So I'm seeing one counselor. I think, I think there were a couple more. Two, three, four. There are four councilors with concerns on the noise ordinance. Are there any others? Because that's not a majority. Councilors Parker, Franco, Baumgartner, and Bordelon have concerns on the noise portion. Okay, so then that's kind of a, wait then, who's that? One, two. Okay. My hands keep going up and down, guys. So I'm seeing, I'm seeing Franco, Baumgartner, Bordelon, Parker, who had concerns with the noise ordinance. I'm assuming the other four councilors present do not have concerns with the noise ordinance portion. What I would say is because we don't have all nine with us tonight, if it stayed in at this point, and then when it comes back for the final draft, it could be stricken if there's a desire to take it out at that point. Mr. Reiner, would that work?
That could work. I do also just want to make everyone aware that this particular section is really just stating that the following information shall be available at the short-term rental by the owner and provided to the renter in writing. And it's saying applicable noise and use restrictions.
All right. Counselor Franco?
Does that mean like Airbnb has their own noise or like restrictions? And that they have to post that inside the short-term rental? Is that what it's saying? Or is this in reference to our town? Because it's applicable noise and use restrictions. And I'm not exactly sure what it's referring to. And that was my whole thing is like, it doesn't say anything and I wouldn't know what it even means. That's my thing. It's not about. Saying anything about noise. It's just, I don't even know what it means.
It, it, it means that someone who has a short-term rental in the town of Groton, if this were adopted as it currently is written, would have to include in a packet of information for any, for any renters, a section of the town ordinance that deals with nuisance. Rich, I don't know if there's anything else you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I actually, it's, 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 it's an interesting question and it was one that when I was putting it together, thought about. The, the property owner may have their own noise or, noise or use restrictions that they would want to, to impose, and that would be included. And they certainly could include it there. This is meant to be a prophylactic provision. In other words, something that is, that you, you give consumers to make them think that that they're, that they need to behave and keep the noise down and keep the use residential. And it is just a disclosure requirement. It's not a mandated standard. It'd be no violation if they make too much noise. The violation would be just not disclosing whatever the noise restrictions are. And the owner, so the owner would be in, be in compliance by simply providing notice with whatever it is. Now, it might be a close quarters. They may have neighbors who they've talked to before they went and rented short-term that said, could you keep the noise down? And they put that in their, in their disclosure.
That clarifies a lot. Thank you.
So then I, it looks like Counselor Bordelon and Parker have questions. Counselor Bordelon, you have a question?
Again, I was part of the, the group that was working on this, short-term rentals. And I think like, we should move in a diligent fashion, but also in a productive fashion that allows us to properly be able to talk on these items instead of moving so quickly. I think there's a lot here. And I think, yes, everything's a starting point, but it, it does serve us to make sure that what we're putting forward is a strong enough piece of document that actually has some validity and not just, let's press it through. I think there should be more deliberation on it. If it takes longer, then that should be our process and that shouldn't be a factor here. So I just encourage that we slow down a little bit and work through this document and put the time and effort into it. I think having hand consensus weight raises does not allow councilors to fully transparently speak to the items. And it's something that you're asking us to vote on and looking for consensus, then we should have the chance to kind of speak to that. So I just don't agree with how we're, we're proceeding with this. It's not the ordinance itself. It's the process. Thank you.
Counselor Parker, did you have a question as well?
Just about the noise ordinance. Attorney Cody, you did say this is. Correct me if I'm wrong. We technically do not have a noise ordinance in the town of Groton. So we are telling the people to make sure, the homeowners to make sure that they're telling their people to keep the noise down. As I stated before, or last meeting, that there could be concerns that the people that are doing the short-term rental could call on their neighboring people and it's not being enforced on the other side. Hence why I wanted to be applicable or consistent for both a current homeowner and a short-term rental person without having any legal issues that can come up down the road. Because I can see a problem. They could be quiet and their neighbors are loud. And then they call the police and say, hey, they're making noise. So I just wanted that because the original thing was no disruptive noise after 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM. I'm just looking for consistency. If we don't have a noise ordinance, how can we enforce the people who own the home to tell the people to be quiet?
If, if you'd like me to answer.
Please.
This, this is not pretending to be a noise ordinance. This is not a substitute for a noise ordinance. It's a provision that, again, is a disclosure requirement that is meant to be prophylactic because one of the issues that is common with short-term rentals is noise and disturbance for the neighbors. What this is meant to do is to make, A, the owner of the property that's renting it out, think about noise as being an issue in the neighborhood and try to control it. And then two, to simply disclose what that person believes to be the applicable noise restrictions. Again, the word applicable here is very important. There is no noise ordinance. So there's no, the only real noise issue would be a disturbance or a breach of peace that could be enforceable by the police. But it, it seems to be worthwhile. And I see this kind of provision in a lot of ordinances that just begin to sort of cause self-regulation of one of the detrimental aspects of short-term rentals, which is noise. So there's no violation by making noise if you're occupying a short-term rental. The only violation would be to simply just not produce a piece of paper and leave it on the desk when the, when the renter comes in. It says, please be quiet after nine or 10. It may be different from, for each property. So that's the purpose of this.
Okay. So I will ask for a show of hands. How many are in favor of leaving 4B2 in place? If you could just raise your hand if you're in favor of leaving it in place. I am as well. So that's one, two, three. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. So then 4B2 will be left in place. The parking thing, we dealt with that one already. The other one was trash receptacles. This is 4B4, the provision about trash receptacles. Counselor Obree, I'm not sure if you have a question or if your hand is from earlier. Okay. How, I have one person who had a concern with 4B4, which is the trash receptacles. Could you raise your hand, please, if you also share that concern? So I can just see. Okay, I'm only seeing one concern with that. So that looks like that one's in. And then the last one is 4E. Which is. When requested by police, the owner or owner's agent needs to respond within 60 minutes. How many have a concern with that section? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, so we're, we're divided on this. So again, let me, let me try to narrow it. Okay, if you could put your hands down, please. Let me ask, is the concern, Counselor Heat, are you jumping in and adding to the concern?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you. So, so the question then is that, to try to help staff with this, is the concern a time limit? Or is the concern that 60 minutes is too short of a time limit? So how many feel that it should be longer than 60 minutes? If you could just do a show of hands, if you think it should be longer than 60 minutes response time for the owner or owner's agent? One, two, three. Four. Five. Okay. So then, would any of you who had your hand up like to suggest a time limit that you think would be appropriate? Counselor Baumgartner, we haven't heard from you. Did you want to suggest a time limit on this or Counselor Obree?
No, I, I don't support a time limit as I don't support that entire section.
Okay.
The subsection for section, subsection E.
Okay. Let me, let me ask that question then. How many would like to see 4E stricken completely? Two. Okay. All right. So that, the majority of the council would like to see that left in place. Counselor Bordelon, are you suggesting a time limit that is other than 60 minutes?
No, I was thinking that it should not be there at all.
Thank you. Counselor Melendez, do you have a suggestion other than 60 minutes?
I, I, this is kind of like different to your question, but I don't think the problem is the time limit. I think those penalty is just too severe monetarily. $500 is probably too much for, I, I like the idea that they have to respond promptly. I just think that if they don't comply, I just think the penalty should be less.
Okay. So then you're okay with the 60 minutes, but the penalty is the issue?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So it looks like we're okay with E. So then let's talk penalties because these were, these were kind of. I can't remember the wording that Attorney Cody used to describe how they arrived at these numbers. They are not set in stone. So can we have suggestions? Well, let's go this way first. How many feel?
Point of clarification.
Excuse me.
Point of clarification on the old point before you move on.
Counselor Bordelon, I have the floor right now. How many feel that the penalty should be changed in some way? Could I see hands on that, please? Okay, so let's talk about the penalty section, which is Section 5 then. Okay, so. No, I don't know. Can you just, Mr. Reiner or Attorney Cody, the numbers were not necessarily based on other ordinances, correct?
That's right. That's right. These were, these were just thrown out there and they, they may be excessive.
Okay. So then, do any councilors have suggestions for different? All right, let me ask a different question. Does anyone feel like there should be no penalties? Let's start with the basic. Does anyone feel that there should be no penalties whatsoever? No financial penalties? Okay, so we're all agreed that there needs to be some kind of penalty. So then let's try to arrive at a number. Counselor Melendez, do you have ideas here?
Yeah, I was thinking perhaps like, maybe like a week or two weeks and increasing that you, your offenses suspended so you can't sort of rent out for maybe a week or, and your second offense is longer or something like that, rather than just dollars. I don't know. I don't know how others feel.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I don't know if it's possible. I'm just saying revoking a license for a period of time. So like, on a first offense, it could be a week. On a second offense, it could be two weeks or something like that. I don't know if it's possible.
So, so to clarify then, you're suggesting that rather than a financial? That's not true because it'll be still be financial. Rather than the offender having to write a check that their right to rent would be suspended? Is that what you're suggesting the penalty be?
Yeah, I think, I think just for not complying with the, with the, the ordinance or the, you know, the, the rules of the license temporarily, your license will be revoked or suspended.
Okay. All right. I see two other hands and then we'll come back to that suggestion in one second. So. And I don't know, legally, we'll have to talk to the attorney about that. But let's go to Counselor Bordelon and Parker with their questions or suggestions.
Um, I think telling people that they suspend their right is crossing a whole nother line. I think we start to get into a lot more than I think we intended to get into when we start doing that. I, I think there's a way to kind of build off the 500 as maybe a second offense, but maybe the first offense should be a lot lower. I also, you know, we moved on to that, but I also think the 60 minutes, I don't think we were done with talking with that section. I, I was agreeing to striking that section, but I also was agreeing that the time, 60 minutes is just not feasible. Keeping that in is not feasible for any monetary ordinance obligation by anybody. What if your phone didn't ring or you're in a bad reception area? I'm going to be hit 500 or however the number is because I'm at work or I work third shift. What if you work in the OR? You don't, you're not allowed to have your phone on you. What if you work in the prison? I mean, you're assuming a lot that people have a 60-minute window and we cannot put that pressure on a homeowner, nor telling them that they cannot have the right to rent the next time because they couldn't respond within 60 minutes. I mean, that's just absurd. So that's why I was asking to slow down. So that's why I was asking to slow down here a little bit, because I think they're one in the same. At $500, that might be worthy of a second offense, but maybe the first offense might be 200 or 100, but definitely not applied to a 60-minute turnaround time. You can't, I'm sorry, guys. 60 minutes is just not feasible for anybody. So people could live in the same state but be at work and not in a capacity to answer a phone or a phone call at that moment. I think that's a lot of work to ask an officer that every 60, within 60 minutes, these people need to respond, and the officer's waiting on the call. I just think that's asking a lot. I just don't agree with that. And I don't like the structure of that, or I really think we start crossing some major lines. So I think we need to look at the 60 minutes and change the 500 to be a stepping process where you stagger from a lower to higher after first offense. But 60 minutes is not fair to anybody. Thank you.
So Counselor Boardon, the question to you was, we are on penalties now. Do you have suggestions for the dollar amounts on the penalties?
As I stated, it should be a stair-step amount, so with 500 would be the max. So maybe the first would be like a $150 offense, and then 250, right? You can't just go hard right at them 500, but I also don't think that they should be required within 60 minutes. John, is that going to be sustainable with our police department? Within 60 minutes, they're going to be timing that and tracking the 60-minute turnaround time?
We have other counselors who wish to speak on this. Thank you for suggesting the 150 and 250. We are on to Counselor Melendez for his second time.
Yeah, just another suggestion. It doesn't have to be the first time you're not compliant to get a penalty. It can be like a three-strike thing, and then there's a penalty. So yeah, that's just another suggestion.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Parker. Did you have suggestions for penalties? This is Section 5B.
A suggestion and a question. But I'd like to do my question first. About the penalties and the collecting of the cash, is this going into a specialized fund? When we collect these fees, is this going into planning and zoning department, or is this being collected by someone else? That's my question. And number two, can we start off with like a written warning first, and then a dollar amount for the second offense, like maybe 250, and then the next offense is 500? And if there's, depending on the offense, I think it should be categorized by what is the offense by seriousness. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. So the question.
I can answer that.
Thank you.
Unless you specify, otherwise it goes into the general fund.
I had mentioned special revenue fund to pay for the company that we would hire to regulate things. I don't know how other people feel about that. We'll go, Counselor Parker. Was that sufficient answer, or do you need more?
Sufficient. I have to think more on that.
Thank you. Counselor Franco, do you have suggestions for Section 5 penalties?
Thank you. I also like the option of possibly just a written warning in the beginning, or towards the beginning of maybe the first two, or something like that. And I like the multiple. Like also, like, is there a way that if you are repetitively having major issues at that place, that we could suspend it? But I mean, there has to be a very high threshold. I think that we work with people. I think suspension should be in there somewhere, but it really has to go to you know, egregious issues. So my question, Mr. Reiner, what are penalties normally for, like, to say in Airbnb if they violate something?
I'm not sure what you mean.
So if Airbnb is in violation of a regulation of some sort, what kind of finer penalties could on them?
Of what kind of, right now, we don't have any Airbnb regulations. I'm sorry, so I'm not quite following.
Just a B and B, I'm sorry.
Oh, a B and B. I think it depends on what the type of issue is. Right now, I think our initial fines on a number of zoning type, or actually, sorry, like ordinances, it could range starting at $100 for the first offense. I think different items have different thresholds. Again, you know, as the town attorney put it out there, this was a placeholder. So if you want us to come back with something a little bit less less than what's here, I heard a few people say maybe the first warning is in writing. The second could be 100, the third could be 400. Or, you know, we can look at some of the existing ordinances we have in town and what some of the fines are to be consistent with those. One thing I would say about suspending some licenses, you know, the fees, I think that could be difficult and get us into some legal issues. I kind of looked too rich on that, but the fees that people bring in for short-term rentals can range anywhere, you know, from what I've seen, a couple hundred dollars a night to literally thousands of dollars a night. So a $100 or $200 fine, I think is certainly going to be a lot less generally than prohibiting somebody from renting it out for a week.
Right, and then I think maybe we should just get some more information on that and see where maybe you guys could bring it back to us, because I'd like to, before I vote on all of this stuff, to see the whole document as a whole. Of course, I'm sure we all, you know, we're all expecting to, you know? But even a response time, do you have that at a B and B or anywhere else? Like, there's a response time in our community? And also, if, I'm not expecting the police to have to notify, are we expecting the police to actually notify us of these of these issues, or is this just if the compliance person goes out and finds an issue? So that's also another issue that I'm not really sure how it's going to be handled, because I don't know if the police are going to be like, oh, yeah, we were there, and we have to like file a report now. So it goes into their file with the town, too, on top of their own records. And if things are missed, I don't know how this is all going to work.
Okay, so I'll go Counselor Baumgartner, then I'm going to ask for consensus again on a couple of things. So Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, if we can back up quickly to definitions, just reading through the ordinance for Section 3 registration language regarding an online lodging operator, I'm sorry, Section 4. How is that being defined in our in this ordinance, proposed ordinance?
Can you tell me where you are again, please? You lost me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If you go into Section 4 on page 16 and page 17, I was wondering how the term online lodging operator was being defined within our proposed ordinance.
So you're looking for a definition for online lodging operator. Mr. Cody, or Attorney Cody, or Mr. Reiner, can you address that? Then we have to get back to the penalties.
Yeah, at the moment, it's not defined, but it's meant to capture your online marketplaces, which are also talked about in 4F.
Yeah, I would definitely support having some form of definition. You know, throughout this process, we've talked about the different forms of short-term rentals, some being more problematic than others. You know, if you go online, you can utilize Airbnb, which is obviously the more you know, the platform that is more widely used, but there are other, if I'm not mistaken, a few companies that have purchased homes, within Mystic in particular, that I think use their own platform as opposed to Airbnb. So maybe more clearly defining what an operator is. Is it a person? Is it a business entity? Is, I think, addressing that could actually solve some of the issues that have been brought up by some of the neighbors and specific neighborhoods in Groton. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burt, did you want to speak to that?
Well, not that particular. I do agree with having definition, but I wanted to just mention in terms of suspending, like requiring someone to not be able to rent for a week. The thing I would worry about that is affecting visitors to the town. You have your daughter's wedding, and all of a sudden they're suspended for a week, so I think we'd have to do it in a way that doesn't penalize visitors.
If I could just quickly comment on that. This is not a licensing ordinance. So you're really not revoking a right to do, or you're not granting a right to do anything that you'd be revoking. You're simply requiring a registration and to have some very small performance standards. If you want a licensing ordinance, it would work entirely different. So in terms of revocation, there's really nothing to revoke. So I don't see that as being really a remedy here. If it's going to be a sanction, it should be a fine and a written warning would be perfectly reasonable.
Thank you. So that was going to be my next question. I do see Counselor Franco's hand, but I wanted to just, I don't want to stray too far. We're working on Section 5 penalties right now, and several, I think three counselors so far have suggested that perhaps looking at the penalty section with a staggered kind of system of penalties where there would be warnings given first, okay? So how many counselors would like to see, we'll leave the structure of that to staff if it is the consensus of the council. If you could raise your hand, if you would like to see some kind of written warnings first before we start assessing dollar fines? One, two, three, four. Okay, so that's a lot of people. So there's a majority, a consensus of the council would like to see, Mr. Burt, Mr. Reiner, some kind of written warnings incorporated into the penalties on this. And what I'm also hearing from people is that they're concerned with the magnitude of the fees. And I think they're looking for some change there. Is that correct? Is counselors, is there consensus to change once we get beyond the written warnings? Would you like to see the fee, the penalties changed? If you could raise your hand, please. If you'd like to see the penalties changed? So one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so consensus of the council is to change the fee structure or the penalty structure on this. Okay. So that addresses Section 5. I think we're good. And I think that was all the concerns that people had. I think we touched everything that people had concerns on. And keep in mind that this, again, this is a draft, and we've been working on this. I think we started in 2019. So we are not rushing. We're doing our due diligence, and we are going through this, and it will all come back again. And you will have the chance to offer input again, but this is, they just need some input from us. So Counselor Franco, final question?
Thank you. I just don't think we've delved into the response time exactly.
I thought when I had asked for consensus, there were only two that were concerned with the response time. I can do that again, though, if you'd like.
I think that's still an issue, and I don't think, I'm not, I can't speak for everybody, but I'm not seeing a consensus on either way.
Well, if, let me ask again. I'll ask again. How many feel that the response time in Section 4E is a concern? Because we had two last time I asked this. So I'm seeing three out of eight. So that's not, there is consensus then that it's not a concern. Is how I'm taking this. I understand you have a concern.
I heard some people didn't want any response time at all. So that's the actual complete opposite. They're just not saying.
And ask that question. How many would like to have the response time completely eliminated? Okay, so everybody feels there should be a response time. A minority dislike Section E, so then we do have consensus on 4E. All right, and I think that is everything that counselors raised in the initial discussion. So Mr. Burt, and Mr. Reiner, Mr. Cody, Attorney Cody, thank you so much for being with us and helping us work through this. And we look forward to the next iteration, and we will offer input at that point as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, are we on the next item you'd like us to stay?
Mr. Burt, who do you have for?
We were planning on having Mr. Cody stay, yes.
Let me ask really quickly, because we normally, we normally have counselors at Perry asking for a five-minute recess. So is there consensus for a five-minute recess? One, two, three, four. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. So that'll put us at 8:24. Thank you. Okay. We'll take a five minute recess. So that'll put us at eight twenty-four. Thank you. Two hands, and I don't know if those are left over from wanting to take a break or not. So I'm not hearing any response. All right. So we will go ahead on to item five C. This is 2021 158. This was on page nineteen in your packet. And there's no motion for this. We are just getting an update from town staff and from Attorney Cody on where we are with our blight ordinance and the blight issue in town. And Mr. Bird, did you want to lead or should we turn it over to Mr. Reiner?
I'd turn it over to Mr. Reiner.
Thank you. And then if you could just introduce, I believe Mr. Zanarini is here. Mr. Reiner, if you just want to introduce your team that you have with us to talk to us about this this evening, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Excellent. So good evening again. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Tonight with me is Tom Zanarini, who does all of our code enforcement as well as blight enforcement in the town. And Rich Cody is also here to answer any questions. You know, the, as a staff, we've taken a different direction over the past couple of years dealing with blight at the direction of the town council and have been going around town looking for more instances of blight. Prior to that, we had been dealing more with kind of when we received complaints, we were going and enforcing the blight ordinance from that perspective. Tom has been very active and diligent on the enforcement of our blight ordinance. Again, Tom is only one individual who's also tasked with a number of other things that he has to do. And I think both Tom and/or Rich could both speak to the, the fact that enforcing blight and taking it through the process, you know, the, the easiest thing we can get is voluntary compliance. And we always try that step first. And then if that doesn't work, it's a more progressive process that is, has required steps per our ordinance of certain deadlines. We have to wait for responses. We have to wait and give people time to actually attempt to clean up their property. And if progress is being made, we see that as voluntary compliance. So I think we do have a very good blight ordinance. We had revised it back in December of 2018. I think at that time, again, with Attorney Cody's help and with Tom, the two of them really taking the lead on this, putting together a much more strict and defensible ordinance that also really light, laid out the, not only the enforcement actions, but also kind of the, the process of moving forward with that. So we are here really to answer any questions. And I don't know if either Tom or if Rich had anything else that they wanted to weigh in at this point in time.
Mr. Cody or Mr. Zanarini, thank you again, Mr. Zanarini for being with us this evening. Mr. Cody, Mr. Zanarini, would you like to speak, sir? Sir?
Tom, if you want to go first, I, I don't really have anything to present. Happy to answer questions, but to echo John, what John just said, you've, you've got a pretty good ordinance. It's got several enforcement techniques. The definitions of blight are consistent with other, other ordinances throughout the state. You, you can enforce it by way of a written order. You can enforce by way of a fine. The ordinance does provide the authority for a government officer to enter property by given notice. So that I know there was a question I saw somewhere about whether or not the town can actually go out and mow somebody's lawn. The ordinance says authorize that with notice. I do tend to recommend that you use that kind of a power sparingly for the reason that when you get up close to a house or onto a, into a backyard or something like that, you're within what's called the curtilage and it's within that area where somebody has the highest expectation of privacy. And you can run into issues with, with having, needing a warrant. But but that tool was there and you know, we'd probably use it on a case by case basis. So it's, it's a pretty good ordinance and it's, 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 it should be pretty straightforward to enforce.
Thank you, Mr. Zanarini. Would you like to add anything, sir?
I would. Thank you. Yes, I'm very satisfied with the ordinance. I think the enforcement process has been going well. I have gotten a substantial amount of compliance and conversations with people who have received letters. I'm getting a lot of, a lot of meetings. It, it turns into of course a, a management issue. Some people that have blight have other issues that you have to work through. There is hoarding issues. There, there's mental issues. So kind of the, the soft hammer works well with this. Guiding him through that. On that note, I, I would say right now I have two properties will probably go to a citation hearing. One has been a problem in Noank, 20 Terrace. There was an issue with maybe Amtrak having a, taking right of way that hasn't happened. The house is, is completely enveloped in, in weeds right now. So that's going to go. And then 176 Grove Avenue on kind of on the city of Garden border. The owner was deceased. The renters in there, it's gone pretty south, pretty fast. And that's going to have to go to a citation because there's been no response. Other than that, I've, I've gotten at least some, you know, good conversations with people and they want to comply. And we got to work with them and I think that's been successful.
Thank you. I will get the ball rolling and just ask a simple question. Is there anything that you need from the council as far as changes that would help you do your job better?
Thank you. Uh, no, I think right now I'm, I'm very satisfied. I think the timeframes work well. I think the going with either compliance or the citation has been working very well. So I, I'm not going to ask for anything further from the ordinance.
Thank you. Do counselors have questions or concerns for Mr. Zanarini or Mr. Cody regarding blight in the town? Council Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have, I have quite a few questions written down. So first, can you explain the timeline for compliance? Because there are some that seem to have been non-compliance for some time. And even a year later, sometimes it's still a problem. Can you explain that? I, I know we're being more diligent now, but.
Sure. Some really go on a, call it a sliding scale. If it's only tall grass, we'll say give them 14 days. If it's a, a problem that has built up over time where it's obvious where the whole backyard is full, then we're looking at, you know, respond within a certain amount of time. And that usually becomes a management issue to get it cleaned up. So it's really, you got to look and see what you're dealing with and, and go from there. So it's sliding scale based on intensity.
Mr. Bird, I think wanted to respond.
Tom, hasn't there been some issues too where you might have, let's say a bank took over a house and it complicates issues because of the lack of a, of a regular owner. I think there's some, even some special circumstances that create, that causes it, causes it to go further that.
There are, and there are stipulations in the ordinance that prohibit enforcement if a recent sale has happened. I believe it's, it's 60 or 90 days. We have to stay any enforcement action if there's a sale. Yeah. If it's in the, if it's in a bank, I've had some foreclosures where there are property management companies that take over and they will usually respond pretty quickly. But sometimes that one property management company takes it and a month later, another property management company buys it from them. So it, it can, it can turn into a, you know, chasing someone's tail.
And what do we do with, perhaps a owner is in distress financially and they're having issues? How do you handle that?
That turns into the management issue. See what you can do. See if they can make small progress. Just try and be, you know, they're, they're residents here in the town. You have to treat them with respect, I believe, and work with them to, to clean up. If they're being, if they're unresponsive, if they don't take letters, if they refuse certified letters, then yeah, we had no choice but to go to a, a citation hearing. But otherwise, I just feel that management is the best way. Sometimes it's not instantaneous response. But if you work with them, you know, talk to them as a friend. I think sometimes they, they come around and you get progress.
And then to touch upon the mowing, if the property owner doesn't do it, well, let me back up. If there's a citation hearing, what happens then?
With a citation hearing, we have a blight citation officer who is appointed by the town manager. We schedule a, a hearing date. The, the owner shows up, give the case to the citation officer and he'll make a decision on what needs to happen based on the evidence, based on timeframes that the enforcement was going on, what we had conversations or letters back and forth with. And he'll make a determination on if there should be a penalty, if he'll give more time for compliance. He'll give a time, he'll give a deadline and then fines will start after a certain date.
And then, so what, where would it become an issue where the town might get a landscaper to actually mow the lawn and take care of it or maybe even clean out the area?
I've had one potential issue. It almost got to that. And I'm sorry, I can't remember the street right now, but this was before the, the revision of the blight ordinance. Problem, house, tall grass, pool, couldn't find the owner. It was a, a big problem. We had a, posted a public notice in the day, couldn't find anything. I finally did a deep dive into the internet and found, after 10 pages of Google, found that this person was working as a civilian for the Navy, for the Navy in Japan. And got to track her down that way. And once I got ahold of her, she cleaned up the property. So I was also in my left hand, I had already contacted three different property management companies. They gave me bids to go in and clean it. And if I didn't get a response, we were going to have that. So that's as close as I've gotten.
Well, thank you. Cause I was part of that because the neighborhood called me and I was helping them through that issue. And I was trying to jump through the whole process.
That property actually I drove by today. It's for sale.
Right. It is for sale. I saw that and it took an extremely long time and the neighbors actually suffered greatly from it. From rodent, rodents and snakes and mosquitoes. And it was just horrendous. And actually, when I had first arrived there, the weeds were, it was a ranch house and the weeds were taller than the roof. I was like blown away by it and that nothing had been actually like, like with all the complaints that had been done. I was surprised that we couldn't have gone to that state to actually go in and take care of it ourselves and charge the owner and.
We, I literally were, I was within.
Having is that I know we're being more aggressive now, but that took an extremely long time and the neighbors suffer. So that's what I'm, I'm I'm asking like, why can't we go in and mow and have a hearing? And if they don't show and they're not complying and why can't we mow or clean up the yard? And, and if they don't pay, you know, send the bill and if they don't pay, we put the lien on. I, I don't understand that because I do know other communities. And I have spoken to somebody in the city and I, I think the city has this type of thing that they do it. So I'm, I'm surprised we can't as a town do it.
I can pass it on to Attorney Cody for response.
Well, again, it's, 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 it's a judgment called by the enforcement officer. I remember that particular case where we finally did track the person down. And if you do enter, the ordinance requires notice to be given. And if you can't find the person, it can be difficult. I, but I don't know what the background is on that, Counselor Franco. I, I don't know how long or, you know, what exactly. I was brought in just, just as we were about, about to issue a citation. And we did a little research. We did some research and found that the person was in the Navy and, and abroad. So, and as soon as we got in touch with that person.
I don't think the person was in the Navy. I think they worked for the Department of Defense.
Might have been, yeah.
They were, they were a civilian employee. That's correct.
So that was a big issue and it took a long time and I had like the amount of communication between the neighbor who was very upset and the neighbors. I mean, I was just absolutely surprised that it had taken so long. And I understand you can't get in touch with somebody, but that's the problem. If you have a vacant or abandoned building and you can't get in touch with somebody, are we just supposed to let it go until? Till when?
No, I think a reasonable effort at notice would be sufficient and then and especially given the fact that it was clearly vacant, you know, probably there could have been some entry to us to clean it up at that, at that point.
Your time's up. I'm sorry. If, if there are no other account, oh, Mr. Reiner would like to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Reiner.
Oh, just a couple of quick points. You know, blight is a newer thing that we're dealing with. This is a newer ordinance. It was adopted right around the time that I started working for the town. And during that time, it was use it with a gentle hand. So I, I think, you know, Tom's work that he's done on this, a lot of it is we're setting a course and creating this policy. It's one thing if the town has always done something, it's pretty easy to kind of pick up those pieces. But we're kind of trying to define a path as we're moving forward with this. I think also that particular case that we've been talking about then resulted in us addressing the ordinance and making it a lot more strict, giving us a lot more teeth in talking about the process a lot more than it had really been before. It was a much more brief document. So I think we're in a better place now if we come across an issue like that. I think we've learned from some of these past situations of, okay, what are the things we can do? And we have more teeth in the ordinance that we have. And we appreciate the patience of everybody as, you know, we're all kind of going through this and learning through this of the best way of doing it.
Thank you. And we have had good people that have reached out to express their concerns about blight. After staff has interacted with them, they've been pleased with the response. And it seems like you're working well with people and you are making progress. So that's good to hear. Anyone else like to ask a question or express a concern? Okay, Council Franco.
It's also been brought up where when you have light at a property and it's diminishing your value of your property next door. Or what type of recourse does a citizen have?
Other than the complaints with this, with town?
Well, let's just say they've gone through the town, they've gone through a citation hearing and things just don't seem to be improving. What recourse does a neighboring owner, homeowner have?
Mr. Bird, I think you could, this is what happened with Depot, correct? With Depot Road?
Well, I think she's even getting further that what action, I, that's where I thought she was going with it. We have something, we just started implementing, well, it's been in the ordinance, but we just use it for the first time. Where if your property value is affecting the neighboring property values, it gives us the opportunity to address the issue. However, now if they refuse to do it and they continue on, what's the legal process? The court, I imagine that's a court process for what we can do. Could we ultimately get both through court to get permission to clean things up, Mr. Cody?
Well, again, your ordinance authorizes you to go out and do it yourself.
Not just mowing, we could do whatever cleanup we need.
Upon notice, the problem is if, if there's resistance, it, it may be a problem. You might want to get a court order to avoid, you know, an unfortunate circumstance. The, the one, probably the most effective remedy, it's not, it's not necessarily fast. But once the citation is issued and you go through the hearing process, the, the fines become a lien against the property and the municipality can then foreclose that lien because it's a priority lien. And that I, I found that once you begin to foreclose the lien, you put the mortgagee on notice. And more often than not, almost 90% of the time, the banks start dealing with the, with the property problem themselves. So the bank will come in and just say to the owner, look, we're going to have to spend money on this. If you don't clean it up, we're going to add what it costs us to clean it up to the debt. And that usually makes, makes owners stand too. In terms of what a property owner themselves can do, they can't enforce the ordinance themselves, but they could possibly bring their own civil action to, to allege that there's a nuisance being created. It would depend upon the circumstances.
So a neighbor could bring a civil suit is what you're trying, what you're saying?
Depending upon the circumstances, if there's a nuisance that's been created and it's affecting the value of the property, it's affecting the use and enjoyment of the, of the neighboring property. You know, like producing vectors, bugs, rodents, that would be creating a private nuisance. And they could bring their own separate action to address that.
Right, because I would just like to see, I understand there's a process, but I have been pretty to some issues. And I know we're being much more proactive now in the last probably six months. But the, but the actual issue with the person that was away in Japan and had left their house abandoned, basically, and didn't take care of it. That was after we enacted this, like, put teeth in the ordinance, and for the length of time that that had taken, I'm just hoping that we are trying to be considerate of the person that owns the home that has a blight issue, but also be extremely considerate of the people who have to live next door to it and what they're going through as well. Because I think if you're maintaining your home and you're contributing to your community in a positive manner, you should, you know, I don't think you should be penalized for that, having to live next to somebody and it goes on for years. And, and I think the town should take a little bit more proactive steps in taking care of those issues. Thank you.
I believe we have since that instance.
Counselor Obrin? Mutant?
I apologize for the fact I had to step away, and I may be asking a question that's already been asked, and if I am, just tell me, I'll have to wait and read it. But if I understand this correctly, you cannot go into the backyard of a property, is that correct?
That's correct, I can't involuntarily go into the back of a property. I can, if I get a complaint from a neighbor, I can view the property from the neighbors with permission, which has happened. So, yeah, I can't address the house other than what is, like, walking up the sidewalk or what is normal public availability.
Okay, so if we have a circumstance where we have a major entry into our town, quite often along an area like that, you have houses that back up to the road. And if we have a situation where those houses are really becoming a detriment to the entrance to our area, would there be anything that possibly could be done?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, I have sent letters to a certain amount of those properties, they're viewable from the sidewalk, they were viewable when the leaves were down. So, yes, that's public view, it's not, you don't have to encroach on anyone's private property to see that.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, very much for coming out, and we do appreciate your responsiveness. And there are members of the community who also appreciate the work you've been doing on behalf of everybody, so thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Have a good night. All right, we are on to, hold on one second, I believe we're on to item five D, which is 2021-533, Miranda Creative Senior Center rebranding presentation. And I think we are on Counselor Head, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct.
You have the floor, sir.
I will make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the implementation of Miranda Creative's rebranding for the Grotten Senior Center, I assume.
Beed and seconded by Bordelain, thank you. All right, so we received in our packet a copy of a presentation, but this evening we have with us Maria Miranda. Thank you, from Miranda Creative, and I believe, Mr. Bird, did you want to introduce anything, or are you just gonna turn it over and let Ms. Miranda screen share?
You can go ahead and turn it over, that's fine.
Thank you, you have the floor, thank you for being here and waiting through all our other discussions.
Well, first of all, thank you for being such a hardworking group of community members. It was heartfelt to witness the work you put into every line item and every aspect that was happening in your community. I don't get the opportunity to do that very often, so I just want to take a moment to say I recognize that hard work. And I'm gonna be brief and uplifting and positive after all the heavy discussions that you have had. I also want to take a moment to give a nod to Mark and Mary Jo, who are behind the camera right now, tonight. They have been an amazing partners in this process, they have been very passionate about every aspect of what I'm gonna share with you this evening. So, everybody ready for some visual fun?
We are, thank you.
Yeah, so here we go, here we go. All right, so a question you have never heard anyone say before, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
No worries, all right, so we're talking about the process of updating the branding for the Grotten Senior Center. And this journey began way before I was at the table for this discussion tonight. A study was conducted in 2019, asking about the perceptions of the current senior center. What could be done to attract more individuals in a broader range of generations to become involved in the senior center? And there were some very, very specific challenges that were mentioned. Among them was the fact that people felt it was limited just to the community members of Gotten, and also their perception of it being a space for seniors. And what those perceptions were of being much older than was possible. You know, I'm currently fifty-seven years old, and I maybe did not feel necessarily welcomed at the senior center was right for me just yet. And the benefits of being active and being part of that community should begin, you know, at my stage in life. So that's great relationships and great communities. So the goal was to provide a change of perceptions and to make sure that more individuals felt welcome to be there. In the original survey, seven out of eight participants indicated they believe that removing the word senior would positively affect the center and its perceptions. And the name should be reflective of the active and community services that are going on there. So that was the charge that was before us. And your community was not the only one facing these challenges, about considering the names and what to call it. When we started doing our research, there were articles and activity happening all throughout the country, headlines like, what do you call the senior center? You don't use the word senior, aspects of ages and that were happening and what that implied. And, so we got together with a core group of individuals who currently use the center, those that don't, those in neighboring communities. And about a half a dozen individuals contributed to our core group, and these were our deliverables. We had to develop a list of potential name changes and get feedback from the various stakeholders. We had to examine other aspects of the branding, the tagline, the logo. We had to measure the sense of the perception of change, the likelihood of the impact of this name. Look at putting together a creative briefing and establish a brand campaign based on our work. How's everybody doing so far with me?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, so we brought together our core group of users and not-yet users, and they expressed some very strong voices about what words they wanted to be considered and what not. Words like active and dynamic and sense of community, words not like elderly, silver, retirement, over the hill, past due, senior, older, older. They were very specific about words that they did not want to see be part of this branding process. They wanted to dwell on, on the joy, the happiness, the community, the sense of activities that were going on. So where do we go from there? We went through about, oh, Mary Jo and Mark, I think we went through about four rounds of creative processes. We looked at the name of the street that we were on, we looked at, including the name Grotten, and we looked at abbreviation. We looked at the numeric of fifty-five plus and a total wellness, we looked at the Center for Balanced Living. And that group gave us sets of feedback, and they ruled out fifty percent of the first options, they liked the numeric. They liked the fifty-five plus, they felt it was neutral, it was reflective of some phrases that were already going on within the center. They wanted to explore the aspect of the abbreviation, but again, they liked the numeric qualifier of what was happening at that point. We went through and did another set of rounds, we did Gotten fifty-five, and this time we introduced Thrive fifty-five. The idea of thriving from that point forward, and we looked at integrating the sense of a honeycomb pattern, the sense of the hive and the community. We looked at the neutral of our generation center, that everyone's generation could relate or be part of that. And there was some feedback that happened from that, and they also, they loved the idea of the active living center being part of the branding. So we went back at it again for our next round of that. And we were at Gotten fifty-five Active Living Center, Thrive fifty-five Active Living Center, and Active Living Center of Gotten. Each one of them having a tagline indicating a previous relationship to the Gotten Senior Center. So there would be comfort, and it would not be an immediate changeover from a well-established name. We'd have time to move forward with the name and give people a sense of the transition. So these rounds went out for testing to a fairly significant focus group, the same team that did the testing of the previous research and information, a community called Great Blue. All right, so let's talk about what the feedback was of that real quickly, you guys have been through a lot of information tonight. The first thing, I'm gonna start with what was the easiest consensus. There was a strong consensus to the sense of the figure in the brand, which is really great, because it reflects the figure. And elements like what you have for your current Gotten Rec Department has a shape of the figure. So it kind of begins to create a sense of branding and families of information among those activities within your community. The strongest and the most popular of the brands was the Gotten fifty-five for the relationship to that. But what was interesting about the choice of that is all of the words that our core group said that they didn't feel comfortable being related to it, were coming out more with the Gotten fifty-five. The relationships to the previously established Gotten Senior Center were happening, and we weren't moving ourselves forward to a space of what we wanted to accomplish. Sorry. And when it came to Active Living Center, that as a phrase, there was a strong association with active, with senior housing and senior apartments, which is, again, something we didn't want as a secondary consideration. When it came to the Thrive fifty-five, the number one recall with that phrase was the idea of being active and being engaged in the community, and the benefits that we wanted to convey for the brand change and to have people think about the environment in that way. So what we looked to do is we looked to bring together the Thrive fifty-five, a modernization of the figure to echo what's being done in other environments, and an energizing phrase powered by the Gotten Senior Center. So we have Thrive fifty-five Active Living Center powered by the Gotten Senior Center. We then took this back to our core group, asked them what colors they preferred, how they liked the association of the name, et cetera. And our core group represented the people who use the environment, who don't yet use the environment, from towns, from nearby. Their reaction was incredibly popular, they were like, love it, perfect, I can't wait to see it on the side of the building, which is what we were really hoping to achieve in this process. And we did a little mock-up of how it might look, you know, on the side of the building, very energetic, very inviting, very fun, reflective of a lot of things that go on there. So what are our next steps in this process? Clearly, we need to look at confirmed approval by the required authorities involved. We would finalize the brand standard for the staff, the partners, and the related vendors. We would have a very thoughtful and engaging launch to the most invested audiences first. We want them to feel most comfortable and welcome in this process, followed by a more public announcement. There would be attrition-based and efficient adoption of the new branding as current materials expire, or as is appropriate based on the resources available. The integration of branding would be in all aspects of materials across all medias. We're strongly suggesting that we look at either some stock images that reflect what's happening within the updated brand, or ideally some locally sourced images, some real members of your community, that would be done by local photographers to reinforce the brand. And in twenty-four months, we will be doing a follow-up survey to measure the impact of the branding to report back to the town leadership team regarding the adaptation and adoption. So that's where we're at, at the moment.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was nice to see kind of the evolution in the process that you went through, I think that was enlightening. So this evening, counsel, we're looking at a resolution that's already on the floor, and we are asked to decide if we want to approve the implementation of this. So is there discussion or questions for Ms. Miranda? And I see a couple of hands, so give me one second, because with the screen share, I've gotta make sure I don't miss.
Would you like me to stop the screen share there?
I think that would probably be okay, because now that the public's seen it, all the council has it in our packets that we could refer back to.
I'll do that, to make it easier.
It was very valuable, though, to have it displayed for the people at home.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have two counselors, I have Counselors Franco and Obrin. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So I like it so far, I mean, I like to have that new name and to welcome, and I think the fifty-five and over, with a plus, I think that speaks volumes, and I don't think there's as many of those communities up in this area of fifty-five and older, like maybe down south, that, like, such as Florida, you would associate that a lot with. So I think up here, I think that's, I think it's sort of new and a little different in our little general vicinity. But I really like it, but when you did the survey, or Great Blue did the survey, how many people did they actually, were they able to reach, do you know?
I don't know the top of my head, I'll get that information back to you. I don't know if Mark and Mary Jo had that information in front of them. I don't want to guess, I will have to let you know and get that back to you. It wasn't a, it wasn't a brief survey, it took place over a period of weeks, so I know there were considerable numbers.
Okay, and so you said the core group was about six people, is that what you're saying?
The core work group, yes.
All right, and so there were under fifty-five, over fifty-five?
Yes, yes.
In the community, outside the community?
Yes.
That's, I think that's great, and then another question is, when they did the survey, that's also, did they contact just people in Gotten? And did they reach out to over fifty-five and under fifty-five to see, like, what their thoughts were on the matter?
They did, so one of the survey elements is, you know, do you currently use it? And if not, why, and what would encourage you to use it? And they went through a series of those samples, and then we also asked them, you know, went through which of the brands did you prefer? Do you not like any of them? They were given all opportunities to provide feedback on it, so that this decision is based on the input of many people and not just a creative decision, which has been very healthy, and again, it's gone on for, it was a process for almost, probably almost a full year to make sure that we had heard from a lot of voices in it. And I'll share with you, Counselor Franco, the six individuals that were involved in it, were in the core work group and giving feedback, they were not reserved, in their opinions. Or, and felt that they had a responsibility to represent who they were and the audiences that they were meant to be reflective of, yes.
Oh, that's wonderful. And the final question I have is, is there certain criteria that we can look at in that when you come back and do your, you know, your survey in the future, that we could say, look, we've had an increase here and here, and that shows that this is working? Are there certain points that we can be looking at to see if this actually accomplished what we were looking forward to do?
So there's a lot of measurements that we can look at, so I know that individuals who come to use the center, you know, their background, their date of birth, or other information is gathered. So we'll have some sense of age ranges who are coming. We also have a baseline of things, such as the number of visitors that are happening to your pages in your websites. For example, the hashtag that is, you know, currently Gotten Senior Center has less than a hundred in all aspects of social media. So we'll learn a lot about the adoption of the brand and what we see happening for more engagement, and also who those users are through various elements of measurement tools that are out there.
All right, great, thank you, I think it's wonderful, thanks.
Well, thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Obrin?
Good evening, I had the pleasure of working with you when you were trying to rebrand Mash into Always Home. And it was a stimulating process, I still think it looks like a cricket, but that's okay. But I've been very much in favor of trying to change something there to draw in younger people. And am I correct when I'm, your final decision at this point is Thrives fifty-five? draw in younger people. And am I correct when I'm, your final decision at this point is Thrives 55? Okay. Well, I know the people that you're working with are the ones that you should be working with that have the experience of, of the people that are coming there and what they would like to have come there. And so I just got to tell you, I'm so pleased with this. I'm 100% behind it. I think it'll make a big difference for our senior center. So I like it a lot better than the cricket. You all don't know what I mean, but I know what I mean.
Thank you, Counselor Aubrey. And, and you and I will forever agree to disagree about the cricket.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Then we have Counselor Heed. I just, I love the logo. I think it's great. And I do like the tie to the other parks graphics as well. I think it's, I think it's a good logo. I think it's clean. It looks really nice. My only question was, I was trying to follow along. And at the beginning, the terms that you were using that people did not look favorably upon, the Active Living Center, kind of raised the specter of assisted living, right? But yet it's here in the final product. So I was hoping you could just kind of clarify the decision to keep it in despite the negative kind of that it had earlier, please.
So where there was, where there was the negative connotation is when it was the dominant name. It was just called an Active Living Center, right? Versus it being a qualifier description. People were comfortable with it being a qualifier description, right? That the Thrive 55 referenced the, the target age population and the sense of activity, energy that happened there. But they didn't want to call it a senior center. They wanted to give an element of description. You just can't say Thrive 55, right? There needs to be a comfort to say where you're going. And that, that brought the best of all elements together. And as long, and also honoring the history of the brand for probably a period of a year, Powered by the Grotton Senior Center.
That was going to be my next question. So that, that will eventually kind of be trailed off there.
Yes.
Yeah, Powered by Grotton Senior Center.
Yes, as we witness, you know, there's, you know as well as I do, like when does something come FedEx versus Federal Express, right? You know, you know, when you start getting a sense of community adoption of a brand. And I, I have witnessed everything from the Connecticut grown logo that we recreated about four months ago, that has immediately been adopted by everyone. And some things take a little bit longer depending upon the audience involved. So I'm recommending that they plan for about a year on the use of that.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to give Mr. Berry and Ms. Riley the opportunity to chime in and give us your feedback on it, and if you're completely comfortable with it, and what you recommend. Please.
I love the process. We utilized people that were non-users of the center that actually were in the perceptions and barrier study, and gave a lot of good feedback there to now move into this study and looking at our branding and what would make them come to the center. And the non-residents, you know, knew of the center and might have been in the building, but now, again, it was the word senior. Well, you know, we think of, and it's ageism to its point is, we think of bingo, we think of walkers, we think of frail, where that's really not the people that attend our centers. So I think that the whole process, the people involved really stressed that to us, that, you know, they wanted it to really reflect how they felt about what they did at the center. And thrive really came down to being the word that they felt really reflected how they approached being at the senior center. So we're really happy with it, or at least I am. I'll let Mark say something now.
Sure. Thanks, Mary Jo. I did want to go back to Counselor Franco's question about the, the size of the survey. So there was actually kind of two components to pulling this in. There was a, a phone survey and an online survey. And between the phone and the online survey, there was 350, 348 participants. And then there was also a focus group, which is, you know, so there was kind of two dynamics working as we went through this whole process. And yes, we, I concur with Mary Jo. We're very excited about this. And I do want to say that we're not just, you know, looking at changing the name and then expecting people to, you know, come through the doors. I think if you haven't recognized by now that the senior center staff is, they really excel with what they do. And, you know, and I've said this before, this, you know, this senior center is not your parents' or grandparents' senior center. They are so engaged and so active, and they're constantly coming up with new program ideas and just kind of pushing the envelope. And I, and I think the, the change in the name reflects what's taking place inside that building.
Agreed. Your, your staff does remarkable things over there. Just one other question, then I'll turn it over to Counselor Heed. I believe Ms. Miranda said that through attrition is when they would be incorporating this. So when you run out of stationery, you'll change the stationery with the new logo. And you do that, you know, I'm just trying to think of like the cost of this, right? So you're going to be introducing this kind of gradually, or are you looking at a brand new light-up sign? I mean, can you give us some idea as to where we are with the implementation and the cost of this? And would it be financed out of the special revenue fund for the senior center? Or is this going to be included in the parks budget? Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to do everything that I can to have Public Works pay for the change in, in the name on the building.
Where's Mr. Franco to defend himself?
Right, exactly. That's why I've said it. Yeah, we haven't, we recognize that that's probably going to be the largest, the greatest expense, changing the name on, you know, the web page, on letterhead, business cards. All of that will take time. And I don't anticipate that it will be all that expensive. I think, like I said, I think the biggest change is going to be, you know, changing the name on the outside of the building. And at this point, I have no idea what that would cost. That isn't something that we priced out at this point. I think we would have to look at what it would cost and then try to make a decision of, you know, where we think best those funds should come from to pay for it.
Okay, so we're not looking at a fourth quarter transfer or anything like that. You're looking at like the normal budgetary process where this would all be implemented?
Yes, specifically the change in, in the name. You know, a lot of the other changes, I think, can, once Maria kind of comes up, lays out a plan, which is kind of the next part of this whole process. You know, once that happens, there's not really a whole lot of expenses associated with that. And, you know, changing the, the name on the bus, on the vans, you know, we, we may wait and do that as the vans kind of cycle through and we replace them. We haven't thought, you know, that far ahead yet. We were kind of just waiting to, to get the council's reaction and then start making our plans moving forward.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. And Counselor Heed, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I like the, I like the proposal. And in the last few months, I've, I've had to spend a little bit more time at the senior center and getting to know what's available through the programs. And I think what, what this does, it kind of speaks to the whole 55 and over approach that, that they're going with their programs. In fact, there's even a group called 55 and over that I'm looking forward to joining when I get that, when I get to be grown up, you know, so I kind of.
Don't rush it.
No, I'm not rushing it, but you know, it's going to happen anyways. It's like the last time I look forward to a birthday, I think I turned 24, my insurance rates dropped on my car, right? So since then, I even, kind of a funny story, I guess, when I turned 40, my friends gave me a cake with a coffin on it, you know. So there's not a whole lot to look forward to, you know. So this is, I like this. It speaks to me about what programs they have, what activities are going on, and you know, how much fun it can be to be there. But my concern would be, somebody who walks in, who had, who's looking for a senior center, how are they going to know what this is? I mean, Thrive 55, it could be a grocery store, you know. So how, how are you communicating that?
Mark, do you want me to cover that, or would you like to cover that?
Well, yeah, I think you addressed it to some degree in, you know, the fact that we're going to, for probably the next year or so, say Powered by the Grotton Senior Center, and then slowly that will, you know, melt away. You know, certainly, somebody five, coming to the center five years from now, how will they know it's a senior center? How will they know that it's a, a center for those 55 plus? That will just be through all of the, the marketing that we would do. I would be surprised if somebody just walked into that building without having seen something somewhere that would kind of give them some information about the, the target audience and what's taking place in that building.
I can, I can expand on that a little bit, Mark.
Please.
So, so I want to make sure everyone's noticed, the, the brand is, is Thrive 55 Plus, which allows the 55 plus to sort of pull out element, which is a, a core indicator of just about anything. Counselor Franco mentioned the 55 plus communities and other environments, which is a very definition of a generational need and generational shift. There's also surrounding content to a brand. So there will be descriptor elements embedded within the website. Some might be publicly seen as far as a description of, of Powered by Grotton Senior Center. Some might be what's called meta-tag or content behind the scenes of a site. So when a person does a search, Counselor Heed, for a senior center, they would be brought to Thrive 55, and all those elements would be there. And finally, I, I think our messaging, which might show actual images of people using the programs or using the resources, also lend to a very clear understanding as to what happens both, both behind those doors and in the programs that go out into the community.
Okay.
It's a very good question.
Yeah, it's the only thing, it's the only critique that I could come up with. But yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
No worries.
I just needed to note that Counselor Aubrey has left us. She had to, to step away. So we are now at seven counselors. So this vote will be out of seven counselors. And she left at, I mean, at the time, for Ms. Hilton, Counselor Aubrey left at 9:16. And council is now at, her committee is now at seven members. Right, thank you. Counselor Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, I like, I love the proposal. I really did think that the senior center needed a name change. Looking at all, like, your process was really interesting. Honestly, I thought Grotton 55 was the best option. I just thought it was more clear that it was like a town building rather than, rather than sort of some other, you know, private company. But other than that, I think, I think, you know, Thrive 55 is better than the, you know, Grotton Senior Center as a name and as a brand. So I don't, I don't know if, if others have sort of the same feeling that Grotton 55 would have been better. I think it makes it just more clear that it, that it's, it's, it's the town of Grotton's building. I mean, everybody knows that now, but you know, I don't know. I just thought for the branding, I thought it'd be more clear. But I, but again, like if Thrive 55 is, is the consensus, I, I think it's much better than Grotton Senior Center.
Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I mean, I hear some of the concerns. I hear what Counselor Heed states, like, how do you find it long-term? I hear what Counselor Melendez states, you know, like, if it doesn't have the word Grotton, I could see something like Grotton Thrive 55. I'd like to ring to that. I think it does, as Counselor Melendez stated, some of my notes here, it, you know, brings it back to being a town building. So then, as I'm sitting here, I did a quick search just to see senior centers, right? And, you know, one of, I'm happy to see that some type of name change in general would happen. But like New London says, New London Senior Citizen Center. Grotton says Grotton Senior Citizen Center, which I always thought was weird, Citizen Center. So that's a little outdated, in my opinion, like, you know, at people, because we allow people from outside to come in. So citizen, so I think that needs, in other towns, East Lime Senior Center doesn't have the citizens. Preston is just senior center. So North Stonington also just has senior center. And then some have the citizens, Colchester Senior Citizen Center. So I never really liked the citizens part added in there. So I'm happy to see something change. But I do agree that I think it would be nice to see it have some bit of a town link. I think you guys did a great job with the name and the, the message, the Thrive 55, along with, you know, Powered by, for now, to have that in there. But, I don't know, it would be nice to see some of the Grotton name in there. Because we're going to have eventually the sail out front, which is the Grotton Sail, with the submarine sail out front. So people might be visiting and like, what the heck is Thrive 55? I mean, if you look from the outside of the building, you might not get that senior message, or the 55 plus Wellness Center, or 55, you know, Advanced Living and Beyond, you know. So I, I could see Grotton Thrive 55. I think we're on to something, but I think the name could just somehow reflect back to the town a little bit. That's my only thought. But I think the name change needs to happen. And I, I can support a change of the name. Is there any more talk that's going to happen on this name, or are we at the end?
Yeah, I, I think, as Maria said, we started this process over a year ago, and I think we've done our due diligence and gone through enough iterations that this is the recommended change. And I, I don't see us going back and circling through this process again.
Right. Yeah.
For sure.
You know, one of the, I'm sorry, one of the things that we, to perhaps address the concerns of, of some of the counselors is, you know, the, well, we'll still call it the senior center, is one of the divisions of, you know, Grotton Parks and Recreation. So we might be able to work with Maria and, you know, tweak what we put forward. And I'm sure that she has some brilliant suggestions on, you know, what we can do to try to make that association, make that awareness, or increase that awareness that, you know, this is part of the Grotton Parks and Recreation Department. So that, I think, may help to address, hopefully, to address some of the concerns.
Even like the Thrive 55 Powered by the Grotton Parks and Rec, like, you know, once you take away the senior center part, you know, that then says, this is a recreation building powered by the, the Parks and Rec. And the Thrive 55 now makes me, leads me to think that this is some type of active center for people 55 plus that has to do with recreation. So I, I kind of, I heard what you were saying, Mr. Berry, about adding the rec. Maybe that is the way to add it in the bottom part?
Well, Mary Jo is probably biting her tongue, but you know, the, the senior center has, I want to say, established its uniqueness. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to take away from what the senior center has done by confusing people or blurring the fact that, you know, this is a senior center. And it, it may be a little bit more confusing by saying Powered by Grotton Parks and Recreation. I don't, I don't know. Maria, you're, you're the expert on this, and.
So I want to make sure I'm saying your name correctly, Counselor, Counselor Bordelon? Am I saying it correctly?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you. So a few, a few things about, about where the decision and the, the aspect of Grotton being there. As you could see, it was one of the earlier. a few, a few things about, about where the decision and the, the aspect of Groton being there. As you could see, it was one of the earlier ideas at the table, right? And, and part of the reason that it, it took a step back to where we went with, where thrive is that when it was so close in sounding to the, the first word being rotten and everything else being very similar, there was still, we weren't moving from the Association of Groton Senior Center to something that really offered a fresh perspective and looking at us in a different way. Right? And, and I think there are opportunities for us to, to think about where we go after we move from powered by Groton Senior Center. It could be Thrive 55 Groton, Connecticut. But there's ways that we can make sure we have the relationship stay within there without tying us to an association that we're trying to move from. I'm not talking about Groton Association. I love that community. I volunteered my time on that sale project, counseling. But I, I want to make sure that we get looked at with a fresh perspective for people in my generation and that people in other councilor generation, that they pay attention to the opportunities that we offer sooner in their lives.
I don't, do I have any more time, Mayor, or do you want me to raise my?
That's what the bell is when it plays. Are there other counselors who wish to speak at this point? I, I would just say it sounded like, uh, Mr. Berry, that, um, this is the final iteration of this. And Mr. Burt, you're asking us to vote on this iteration, correct? So it would be an up or down at this point?
That is correct. I, I think it'd be a shame to throw out this process. I fully support this name.
Thank you. Are there any other first time speakers before I go back to second time speakers? Counsel Franco, for your second time?
Thank you. I, um, so when I was looking at it myself, I mean, when I looked at it, I thought the GSC 55 plus. But then as I started scrolling through the presentation, I was taking it all in. I'm like, oh, there's a lot of different variations and options and, and as I see the presentation as it is in this PowerPoint, if you're telling me there were foreigners, some, like, a lot of people, you know, you communicated with a lot of people, not just myself. And, um, of what they thought about this. I mean, I'm sorry, you didn't communicate with me about it, but you know, about what my opinion is today about it. But there's more to it than what we're just seeing in these few slides and that there's a lot more background to it. And I'm sure you asked more than just three questions. And, um, so I think you came to this with a big audience. And I'm sure there were some people that maybe liked, you know, some of the other options, but this is the overall option that came forward as the best option. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, for, especially for what we want to accomplish, Counselor Franco.
Right. And I definitely, 55 plus is like huge. I think that's gigantic. And honestly, like when I look down at Florida now and I'm looking at property, there's a lot of 55 and older communities that I'm like, maybe I just want to be in one of those, in those kinds of neighborhoods, you know, when I'm older.
And especially, especially the idea of thriving.
Right. And they do so much there. There's so much activity. And that's what I'm thinking. When people maybe put together the 55 and over, they're my, I do, I put together, there's a lot of activity going on there and things going on. And I, as all counselors here, I've spent a lot of time at that senior center as well. And there's a lot going on. So I like, I like the thrive. I, I think in our community, they'll, you know, it's going to be on social media. All kinds of people are going to be talking about it. And if somebody shows up and they're like, what is Thrive 55? Somebody in the community is going to tell them exactly what Thrive 55 is if they're asking, you know? By the, you know, so that's what I'm thinking. If they don't read the finer print of it's a senior center. And I think this is something that's going on nationwide of trying to figure out how to convert from what people think of as a senior center into an active like an older community of people doing things. So I like it and I'm trusting in with the majority, I have to say, on this creative idea because, you know, I respect that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counsel Boardlon, for your second time?
Thank you. Um, it's not that I'm shooting it down by any stretch of the imagination. As I stated, I don't like the citizens, you know, logo on things. I think that's way outdated. I just think it's important that whatever we do and we put money into, it needs to be something that's going to stick. And in 50 years, folks are going to look back and say, wow, what a great name this was. So something that we don't have to keep revisiting and revamping and adding and keep funding and changing the bottom line. So that's all I was asking. And honestly, this is the first time that we're asked what we thought of it. So this is where we're picking it apart for the first time, at least I am. So when, when the name comes forward, you know, asking these questions like should Groton be in there or not is why it's being presented to us. So this is the first time I'm being brought around the table to ask what my thought actually is on the name. So with that, I think the Thrive 55 is great. I respect the will of the people. I do not like the fact of the financial side of constantly changing it and revamping it and having to restructure it. So I think we really need to think now outside the box and have that plan already transitioned in. I think from, you know, the taxpayer and the community side, it's great to have the name, but we should finalize the underlying, uh, message and how that's going to be. So if Thrive 55 is the way it wants to go and everybody seems happy with it, and you don't think Groton in there anywhere is important, or maybe Groton, Connecticut down at the end, that's fine. Uh, but I just think that we should have a plan and think of it long-term. And, you know, have a way to identify it as a rec building of sorts, which is town related. That's all I was thinking. The Thrive 55, you know, is great, but you know, it's somehow identifying it as, as a town building because it looks like it could be a private fitness center, you know, if you drive by it quick with that, with the logo like that and which is fine. But, um, I just want to make sure we don't lose the clientele because it's distracting or they don't recognize it. When you do Google all the towns surrounding, they have not changed theirs yet. So people look for that senior center, unfortunately. So, but I'm excited to see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, and Counselor, I've been doing brands for 33 years. Actually, 33 years ago tonight, I decided to open up my own agency. So, um, there's, uh, all input is always welcomed in the process and it's good to ask questions about it. Because at some point someone's going to say, did you ask that question? And you can say, yes, we did think about it.
And Mr. Berry, it would be nice if we could possibly in the future, maybe have us in a little bit sooner before we're at the final stage, right? Um, we're asked to vote on something, but it's great to hear all the constituents, you know, ideas, but bring us in a little sooner so that we can kind of work out the kinks or thoughts so that we're not just getting to the final stage and we can't really change anything today. I feel kind of like, I'm going to move with it, but there's no process in which you're saying tonight that we can do much anyway. So it kind of feels, you know what I mean? Like we weren't, we were brought in at a sooner point in the process. So if I'm going to vote on something, I should have a stake in understanding how we got here and not just the presentation and vote. We should be able to come in sooner and voice maybe a concern or two so that we have a chance to get that validated and brought back to the committee at large. Thank you.
Sure.
Your time is up. Thank you. All right. All right. See no other hands. So we will vote on 2021, 533 Miranda Creative Senior Center rebranding presentation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. Thank you, Ms. Miranda, for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Berry and Ms. Riley. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for your time. It was a pleasure to meet you. Bye-bye for now.
Have a good evening. Right. Counselors, we are, we have enough time. We don't have to do anything special because it's 9:33. We can go on to our last item tonight, which is 2020, 595, Board Commission Member Recognition. Uh, we don't have a motion in advance, but I will turn it over to Chairman Melendez, who is Chair of our Personnel and Appointments Committee. I believe this came through your committee, sir, correct?
Yes.
You have a for, sir?
Thank you. Um, yeah, so we, Counselor Heed, Counselors Perry and, um, Town Clerk McCauser, um, had a discussion last month about this. We came to a conclusion that we were really talking about. We brought like two different ideas together. One of the ideas was what we had done in the past where it was sort of this, um, we recommended, uh, doing two different things. The first thing was what we had done in the past where it was an annual event. Where every member of the ABCs, come and they get recognized, um, on a night and it's, it's sort of a, an event. Um, and then the other thing was the other idea we had, um, when we were talking previously was the recognition with the proclamations at the town council meetings, and that would be done quarterly for anybody who, um, had retired in, during that quarter. So it's sort of, you, you get recognized at the end of your term, which was one of the ideas, and also during your service annually. So yeah, that's sort of just the, we recommended both. So that's just sort of an overview.
Thank you, Chair Melendez. Um, Mr. Burt, um, in order to enact this, is it just a consensus of council or do you need something more from the body this evening?
Um, assuming the clerk is good with it, I think consensus is fine.
Madam Clerk, you are still with us this evening and thank you for sticking about and hanging in there with us.
That's interesting. Well, your question, your question being, can we just go ahead and do this? Well,
Yes.
Well, there's a question of how do you pay for it if you're going to have an event? Of course, giving the information quarterly to the council of who's retired or resigned or not reelected, that kind of information is easily, doesn't cost a thing. But if you're going to have, you know, we used to have an event every year and it's a small event. It wasn't, it wasn't huge. But it's been a while since it's been enacted and it's, we stopped doing it for budget constraints. I mean, we were talking about under $3,000 of an expenditure, but it was, it was like $2,600, I think, the last time we did it. So, you know, that, that's up to the council. So it's where, if you want to say, yeah, we're going to do it for the committee, from this is a committee, the whole, this is not the council. So if the council says to do it, then we'll do it, but we got to pay for it.
So, so just to clarify, the, the two-pronged approach, uh, one prong costs nothing. It's just the proclamations. Those are easily generated. So we don't have to worry about cost on that because that's something that as long as you had the information, the clerk's office could generate the proclamations.
Right, right. I have the materials. I do, I do purchase those materials regularly. They're within my budget.
Right. So then the, the bigger question then that we have to grapple with this evening is the annual event. And we, we could handle this one of two ways. Someone could, could make a motion and come up with the funding source or we could just say, yes, we want to do this and then ask Mr. Burt to include it in the budget that they're going to be starting to prepare within a couple of months. So, so, um, I, I know, uh, departments usually are asked for their budgets, I believe in December. So it, it's something that if we're going to go ahead with this, we should have it known that we want it done. And then that would give the department the appropriate opportunity to incorporate it in their budget. So, uh, Mr. Burt, does that process sound okay if, if, if it is the consensus of the council to go ahead with the annual event? Uh, would that timeline work?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. So then, um, we need to hear from, from members of the COW whether you like the Personnel and Appointments Committee recommendation to have this two-pronged approach with proclamations, which aren't going to really cost except for the clerk's office and then the party which we'll have to budget for. So I, I need people to speak to that, please. Um, I can do consensus again, if you'd like, with show of hands. How about, let, let's go this way. Counsel Franco, did you wish to speak? Are you raising for consensus?
I have questions.
Okay. So then let's take a couple of questions and then we'll see, uh, where we end up with this. And then please, when you're asking your question, specify, um, who you're looking for the answers for, whether it's for Chairman Melendez in the committee or Mr. Burt or, um, the clerk, please. Thank you.
Thanks. So Chairman Melendez, for the annual party, how, what do you foresee the party being like? Would, people get up and give speeches? Would there be, um, just a bunch of hors d'oeuvres? Would there be a presentation of any type of gift? Would it be at this, like, at a town building? Would it be at a restaurant? What are you, what are you foreseeing here?
I think the discussions that we had at the meeting was leading to what was done in the past. So whatever, whatever was done then is, is sort of like what we were recommending. So if, I, I mean, I, I believe it would possibly be at the senior center and people, we go by committee, but the, the town clerk probably could give you more information on what they did in the past.
If I could jump in here for a second. This used to happen and it was eventually cut out like through budget cuts. So they stopped doing it. But the idea behind doing an annual event was not so much to present anybody with a gift or, or have a whole lot of speeches. It was mostly just, uh, you get together. Obviously, you know, you will probably have like a welcome speech and then basically mingle with the people who are volunteering their time for the town. So we can't all get to all of the meetings. So we, for example, as counselors, can't meet people who are on half of our boards and commissions. Um, and it would just be one of a social opportunity to meet them and not everybody attends. It's just an opportunity. And I believe as, uh, Town Clerk McCauser indicated, there would be hors d'oeuvres and light refreshments, that kind of thing, nothing, nothing major. Uh, but, um, I'll follow, um, Chair Melendez's lead and ask, uh, Counselor or Clerk McCauser to expound upon it. Thank you.
I, I think you, I think you hit the nail on the head. It, it really, the, the event was, was meant to, um, thank all the members, you know, the volunteers, boards and commissions, RTM, town council, you're all volunteers. Uh, and there's no recognition. And this was something that I think it was started back when Sally Sawyer was the, was the chair, was the town clerk. I think she was, she organized it to begin with and it was carried through with Barbara and, um, it was cut out during Barbara's tenure, but I tried to revive it. So, you know, exactly what, what Conrad, uh, Counsel Heed said. So it's a, it's a low-key event, but it gives the opportunity to everyone to meet everyone, you know, other people. But you could combine, um, a, a recognition, thanking people who had retired. Also, there's no reason why you couldn't.
All right. So when you did this in the past, was it just for volunteers or was it for staff or combination?
Oh, you'd have, you do have staff. Of course, staff would come. You know, you, they know, they know the members, you know? So, uh, they would, they would want to introduce, you know, Mark, uh, Mr. Berry would introduce members of the Parks and Rec to you. You know, you don't know who's who. So.
Can I jump in real quick? I think, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Franco, but you're asking if we honored retiring staff as well as, um, commission members and no, it was always just ABCs and elected officials.
Right, right, right. Um, if, any, any employment recognition has, I, I really, I really am very uncomfortable with even considering talking about that. That's something you ought to talk to, uh, you know, HR, uh, and see what, what you can do with HR because it, it gets really touchy, you know? Especially if you did something and then you stopped doing it. Volunteers, you could kick them around. Sorry to say, but you can.
All right. And impressively, how many people would attend these events annually? Just, uh, I, I given, just wondering.
My memory is less than 100.
More than 50, less than 100, somewhere in that range?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Boardlon?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I was going to say for retired staff, I think once a year would be like, uh, would people come back a year later to retirement thing? So I, yeah, that might be something we want to talk to HR about. And, um, I mean, I think they should be recognized as, as retirees from the town as well. But that might need to be done in a more proactive, like on the spot. I mean, some retirees don't stick around and not going to fly back in a year. But if that's something we decide to do for a town, um, staff retiree, I think that would be great. But it's But as far as volunteers, um, I think it is important to recognize our volunteers as stated, we are not paid employees and. I think, um, one that I remember really well was the RTM member who passed and Conrad and I got to talking and. You know, knew a lot about Alicia Bauer and the more research we did, um, you know. Uh, we realized how much of her time she volunteered in other states for town. And so getting that proclamation to her when we did, um, was actually amazing because she did not live much longer after that. And the pictures and stuff from that were, you know, just amazing and, and she to this day, you know. My, my mother-in-law knew her quite well and, um, she remembers her excitement with that. So it is a lasting thing for a person who volunteers their time to the town. So I do think that, you know, it's a small token. Some people may not show up and it might be something you drop in the mail. But you read their name and, and it's something that you just honor. So I think it's important to recognize folks. Thank you.
Okay, so I will ask, um, for, for consensus then, is there a consensus to go ahead with. Um, the Personnel and Appointments Committee recommendation for this kind of two-pronged approach? And have, um, the annual event be budgeted into our next budget cycle? Can you just raise your hand since we don't have a motion on the floor? If you're in favor of that, if you could just put your hand up, please. One, two, three, four, that's a five. Okay, that's a majority of the seven then. So yes. So, Mr. Burt, is that all you need from us on this?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And thank you Chair, um, Chairman Melendez and the Personnel Appointments Committee for working on this. I know it's something we've been kicking around for a while, so thank you for putting it, um, on our, on our plate here. So we are on to, um, other business. And I see hands, but I'm not sure if these are leftover or new for other business. Councillor Boardland, is this for other business or is this?
Yeah, just so I can say here, um, the question would be for John, how do we move something to get town staff recognized, uh, when they retire?
I'll talk to Bob about it.
Are we currently doing anything for that?
I don't believe so. We, I know there's been some discussions, but especially because of these others discussions, but I don't believe so.
Okay, so, yeah, I would like to, um, see how we can do that. I'll, I'll send an email on that. I think it would be important to also come up with a system that's, you know, timely, that recognizes our, you know, retired staff when they leave. So I think that'd be, um. Important. Thank you.
All right, is there any other, other business? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Seconded by Franco. Those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven councillors, seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. We are adjourned at 9:47. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Night and, uh, be well. Take care, wear your masks and encourage vaccinations. Thank you.